Good evening. Welcome to the September 5th Village Board Meeting. This meeting is now called to order. We'll begin with the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag and to the states of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Trustee Bazemore?
Present.
Trustee Codman?
Present.
Trustee Levin?
Present.
Trustee Herrera?
Present.
And Mayor Garrity?
Present.
Okay, we begin tonight's meeting with a public hearing in the matter of a local law amending Chapter 162, Housing, Property Maintenance and Building Code Administration of the Village of Austin Code, Proposed Local Law Number 5 of 2018. Is there anyone here to address the board on this matter?
Mayor, if I can just make a brief introductory.
Please do.
These are a number of proposed changes to Chapter 162, which is our Housing and Property Maintenance and Building Code. It includes new sections relating to commercial occupancy and creates a vacant building registry. With regard to vacant buildings, there will be fees for the registry and there will also be fines for failing to register your buildings. It also creates a section with regard to outdoor signs, which was not present before, and defines abandoned signs. It has a section regarding transfer of ownership, requiring that if there are violations with regard to a particular location, the owner must notify the incoming owner of those violations and if not the owner, the leaving owner can be fined. It also includes the Director of Code Enforcement as an individual who can issue building permits, certificates of occupancy, and other actions within the building department. And finally, it prepares and presents certain presumptions that can be used for prosecutions for illegal residential occupancies and overcrowding in dwellings. These are rebuttable presumptions which can be presented to the court at the time a case is brought to the court through a notice of appearance. So it's multiple violations and it's continuation of our changes from Chapter 162, which the board approved last year.
Thank you very much, Corporation Counsel. And I realize I should have made a remark before the meeting began in earnest to let folks know that if there is anyone who would prefer to have the meeting translated into Spanish, the gentleman over here is our court translator. He is translating the meeting. And there are headsets available. Thank you very much to the school district. They're loaning us your headsets. They are at the back. As you entered, you may have noticed that our Assistant to the Village Manager, Amy Hoffman, is there. If you would like to check out a headset for this evening, the translator will be translating into the headsets, except if there is someone who comes up to the podium and is in need of a translator to provide us with translation during the meeting. And I also want to clarify, thank you very much, Corporation Counsel, for detailing some of what is in the proposed changes to the code enforcement law, Section 162, I believe. I imagine that many of the folks who are here tonight are here to comment on what will be our third public hearing of the evening, which is regarding the vacancy study, which would potentially allow us to enable ETPA. If that is what you were looking to speak about, it probably won't be too long. I think many of the people who are here are here for that same reason. But we are starting off with any public comments about the proposed changes to strengthen our code enforcement opportunities, particularly in all of the very challenging and transient challenges that we see in code enforcement with many of our buildings, including vacant buildings and other challenges. And I'm very pleased we're taking a more proactive role. And thank you very much, Corporation Counsel, for updating us. Would anybody like to comment for the first public hearing? First, we have Robert McCraner signed up. Is he interested in speaking for? Are you interested in speaking for the public hearing regarding the updates to Section 162 regarding code enforcement? Is there anyone who signed up who is interested in speaking on the first public hearing regarding the updates to code enforcement? Okay. Seeing no one. Seeing no one. Is there a motion to closing the public hearing? Adjourning public hearing to close this public hearing?
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Then next, we have a public hearing in the matter of a local law amending Chapter 75, Animals of the Village of Austin Code, Proposed Local Law Number 9 of 2018. Is there anyone here to address the board on this matter? This is the proposed local law about dog tethering. See, we have someone.
Good evening, everyone. Deborah Pangol, The Cat Squad Rescue, Briar Cliff. Just down a little bit. We have a saying in rescue speak, and it goes like this. "We do it for the cause." I'm reminded, as I stand here before you again tonight, for almost a year now, that at the center of our work in anguish, frustration, and challenge was the awareness and knowledge of a chained, suffering dog, alone, without a voice. It has always been about acknowledging the rights of dogs and justice for their suffering. We are here tonight to acknowledge the work and commitment of this board. You were forced to listen to our pleading, intelligent reports, and yes, ranting. We showed up in freezing cold nights and wind. We were few, and we were many. We came with fierce intention and determination. We feel that as of tonight, in a way, you have heard us. We are here tonight to acknowledge the work that the board has been working towards and submitted a proposed tether law a couple weeks ago. This is a big step forward, and we are encouraged by your effort and commitment. However, there is still work to be done together. The current law does include humane and acceptable portions, which we appreciate and accept. The proposed law that the board submitted actually gives permission to chain a dog for 12 hours a day. This is not an anti-law at all, an anti-chaining law. We are saying that chaining of a... You're saying that chaining a dog for more than two hours is humane. This does not protect dogs. This portion of the proposed law is not a tether law at all. We cannot accept such a law and ask that you work together to accept the law that we submitted back in January of 2018, that dogs be permitted to be outside with supervision for two hours only. This is the national standard that is followed by most rescue groups and professionals who do research and study humane care. If you are about suffering dogs, if you care about the suffering dogs and the neighbors who endure this too, do not send a message that chaining is humane or acceptable with this current law. Pass a strong tether law that says, "We care and we will protect you." Thank you.
Would anyone else like to comment during this public hearing?
Act House tonight. Good. Okay, I reiterate what Deborah has said, of course. Oh, Virginia Vesal O'Leary, I'm sure you all know my name, I doubt. I was born and raised in Austin and really had high hopes that we would have passed a tether law months ago. As Deb said, we've been working on this month for months and months. And our main concern, of course, is to pass a law for the well-being of Austin's dogs. Just to say, when we like to do an activity, we do it until we don't want to do it anymore. Tethered dog can't stop if he's tethered outside alone. Dogs like the rain. But he left out for 12 hours without anybody around, isolated. He can't stop it, we can. Some dogs love the snow. They love to play in the snow. But would they want to be out there for 12 hours in minus 32-degree weather temperature? Would they like to be out in hurricanes, in rain, in sleet? For 12 hours? I don't think so. I don't think any of us would want to have that happen to them. And we've given you lots of research, lots of information. There's been many municipalities. The last time I spoke to someone last week, New Jersey has passed a really good tether law for the whole state. And Best Friends of Utah, which is a very, very well-recognized animal shelter, sanctuary, I should say, they approve of it. I've talked to their lawyers and, I mean, there's a lot of good going on. And like I said, I would have hoped Austin would have been in the forefront for this. And considering that these animals are considered companion animals, they want to be with their people. They don't want to be left outside. None of us want to be left outside like that alone, none of us. So anyway, I would really like us to improve on the proposed tether law. 12 hours is not, not... That's not good. It's really not good. So we would like you to, you know, bear down on that and read our research that we've given you already. And please, pass a strong tether law. Let's be proud of what Austin does. I know we need a lot of pride lately with Austin. So let's get going. A good tether law. Thank you.
Roberts, Tarrytown. I guess my question is, I sat and I heard the tether law that you're planning on passing or thinking about passing. And my question is, in thinking about it, who is really getting protected by this law? The dog's not getting protected very well. The neighbors aren't getting protected very well because not only do they have to see this, but it affects them. And an animal to be in these extraordinary temperatures with a triple coat of fur. I have watched the animal. I have watched them squeeze out of their front door. They put down water and food. And I know there are other animals, too. So my suggestion is, when looking at the different hours, 12 hours tends to be in farm country, not in suburban areas close to New York City. So I just ask you to please consider this.
Thank you. Are there others who would like to comment on the tether law? Seeing no one. Do we have a motion to... Oh, are there more? Please, please, you have time. You have time. I didn't see you. Welcome.
Ms. Diane Deary, I'm a longtime Austin resident. I've never spoken at a public meeting before. I think you have a unique opportunity here to do the right thing. Owned dogs for 35, 40 years, and I would never leave a dog out like that in this heat. And we have a responsibility to each other, to our animals, to be the best we can be. And I hope you all stand up and do what's right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Maria Leguio, Tarrytown, New York. I'm here once again, almost a year later, in support of this tether law, a humane tether law, where a dog won't be left outside for endless hours. 12 hours would be either during the day when the family's at work or overnight when everybody's in bed. It's just, I think it's a very simple issue. And I don't think that we should have, you know, had to come here for almost a year to do something so simple and humane to protect one or 100 dogs in our community. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak during this public hearing regarding dog tethering? Okay. Seeing no one. Is there a motion to close this public hearing?
I'm moved. Second.
Anyone on the board like to comment? Stuart, I did hear, I don't recall that we have reviewed any legislation in New Jersey. But apparently, I'm told tonight that there is a New Jersey law regarding dog tethering. If that's not something we've looked at in the past, would you be kind enough to look that up and see if there's something else for us to...
Very well, Mayor. I have looked, as you know, at all the New York laws with regard to this. And an inordinate amount of time going through all those laws. If you wish, the board wishes, I'll be happy to look at the New Jersey tether laws.
Thank you very much. Do we have Madam Clerk? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, next, we have a public hearing in the matter of consideration of the Emergency Tenant Protection Act as applied to qualifying rental properties in the Village of Austin. Is there anyone to address the board on this matter? We do. We have... First, I have on the list is Carl... Before you, before you, before folks start to come up, I anticipate this is, we're going to hear from many of you, though maybe not everyone in the room wants to speak. Thank you all for being here. I would like to make some remarks. I don't know if my colleagues would like to make some remarks. And then we will turn it over to you. Four years ago, I encouraged the village to consider ETPA. My goal was to preserve affordability in Austin. I'm someone who's never afraid to consider an idea and then study it deeply and make a well-informed decision. It's the same process that I undertook with ETPA. And I have concluded that while the New York State program does offer strong protections for tenants who live in ETPA buildings, it is far too great a cost for our community. In fact, ETPA will actually make Austin less affordable for most residents. And it will all but eliminate the possibility for much of our existing substandard housing to be improved. Unintended consequences of this process have already begun to hurt tenants. In recent months, tenants have been seeing their rents go up as landlords anticipate ETPA. So what will we see next? Will we see ETPA building owners, if we were to implement it, seek to have their properties reassessed? Of course we will. No property owner wants to pay more taxes than they need to. And as some buildings decrease in assessed value, the burden will shift to the rest of the property owners and tenants. The oversimplified rhetoric that we've seen so much of that pits tenants against homeowners is a divisive tactic that ignores the potentially detrimental impact on tenants not living in ETPA units. When taxes go up for everyone other than ETPA building owners, what happens to the majority of Austin tenants? Any increase felt by non-ETPA landlords will be passed directly onto their tenants. No doubt, tonight, someone will refute the argument that tax assessments will be impacted by ETPA, and they will cite a quote "study" from a Columbia professor who reviewed property values over the last 15 years and determined that there is no distinguishable difference between communities with and without ETPA. The great failure of this study is the period of time he analyzed. He reviewed a 15-year period that just passed. If he had instead selected a 15-year period that looked at the time when ETPA was implemented in those communities, his results may have been very different. And I want to thank, there's an Austin resident who reached out directly to that Columbia professor to learn more about his approach and his findings. Which brings me to a word about studies. In 2016, the village hired a consultant to do a vacancy study. It was Community Housing Innovations. They were hired at a cost of about $500 to answer a single question. What is the vacancy rate in ETPA-eligible buildings? Now, that study was probably not performed well enough to have withstood legal challenge. But the vacancy study we discussed at last week's work session answered the same question and found roughly the same results. This time, it cost us $10,000, but it is a much better study and equipped to stand up to legal scrutiny. Also in 2016, a resident shared his study. And while we always appreciate the insights of engaged residents, that report that he provided was not something that was commissioned by or accepted by the village. It was, though, an analysis of publicly available data presented by an Austin resident. ETPA advocates, including CVH, asked the village to undertake a housing needs assessment. CVH was a stakeholder that participated in the housing needs assessment process. And when the housing needs assessment recommended against consideration of ETPA, unless and until we first implement a comprehensive approach to improving housing and safety and affordability, CVH and ETPA advocates then decided the village should disregard recommendations. Listening to facts and advice from housing experts isn't a scheme cooked up by evil landlords. In fact, it's what CVH wanted the Board of Trustees to do. But when the empirical data and extensive community outreach came to different conclusions than what was expected, CVH decided the recommendations should be cast aside. Contrary to what some may claim in the media, the housing vacancy study that was shared at last week's work session did not say that the village, quote, "should declare a housing emergency." As I said, the study answered a single question, which was, what is the housing vacancy rate in units eligible for ETPA? The study found that a low enough vacancy rate exists so that we are legally permitted to enable the New York State Rent Stabilization Program, known as ETPA, if this board chooses to. The question this prompts is actually, why should a tight market rate drive a community to impose rent stabilization? The housing needs assessment did not find that Austin's rents in older buildings were skyrocketing. A landlord always wants a low vacancy rate. If he's having trouble renting a unit, he may lower the rent to stay competitive. I'm sure there was a perfectly good logic to this system when it was designed 40-plus years ago for the housing crisis in the 1970s in New York City. But today seems rather arbitrary. The question of should a community implement ETPA is one of policy. That question was explored comprehensively in last year's housing needs assessment. In part, thanks to this in-depth study, I have come to recognize that the unintended consequences will be more detrimental to our community than the benefits can justify. Austin can do better. In fact, that's what the 2017 Housing Needs Assessment made clear in their recommendations, by advocating that we first implement seven strategic policies designed by and for our community. And only if they fail and we see a dramatic increase in rental rates should we then consider ETPA. Substandard housing is one of the greatest challenges we face in our housing stock. Since becoming mayor, I've had the privilege to attend ribbon cuttings at two properties purchased and renovated by IFCA. Unfortunately, no ETPA building will ever be purchased and given new life in this manner. The financial investment needed to renovate a substandard building is far too great to undertake with the bureaucracy involved with ETPA. Even as Chuck Lesnick from the New York State Department that manages ETPA spoke last week, it was clear that in the real world, no one, for profit or otherwise, can afford the risk of investing in our community that way again. I'm pleased to say there is progress being made toward improving conditions for tenants. Next week, representatives from the Landlord-Tentant Relations Council, I believe, will be at our work session to update us on what they are experiencing. The Landlord-Tentant Relations Council was strengthened and reconstituted this year. They are a resource for tenants in any building in Austin. And I understand they have already heard from a number of residents, I think also one landlord. One of the other bright spots in this very public discussion is the number and diversity of voices speaking in support of mixed-use, mixed-income development on village land. I'm also pleased that developers specializing in affordable and mixed-income housing have approached the village and expressed interest. I have called for us to reopen the comprehensive plan, a necessary step in moving our village forward with zoning that meets the needs of our community today and for the coming 10 or 20 years. Opening the comprehensive plan is something we've talked about for years. We even put money for it in the budget. Unfortunately, a lot of bandwidth has been dedicated this year to ETPA. So the room is full. There are lots of folks here. Everyone can speak for up to four minutes. Please, you do not need to take four minutes if you can make your point in less. But when the four minutes is up, we don't have our obnoxiously loud shot clock, but we do have a timer that... Okay. But when the four minutes is up, I will say, "Thank you for your comments." And I ask that you please then step aside and let the next person speak. If you have your comments in written form, you may share them with a clerk. Whether you are a tenant or a homeowner or a landlord, thank you for being here. There are a few things more personal than someone's home. We appreciate you coming out and speaking with us tonight. When you speak, we will listen. Tonight is not a dialogue, but if there are corrections or clarifications that need to be made by staff or by someone on the board, we certainly will speak up. If anybody else would like to comment before we begin to hear from the community members?
I don't want to comment. Just to add, for those of you who've been here, you know this. But for those that don't, if you could speak into the microphones and tell us name and residence, please. And if you're wearing different hats and representing something else, please let us know that as well.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Okay. First up, we have Carl Finger.
Good evening. My name is Carl Finger. I'm an attorney. I represent the Building and Realty Institute and the Apartment Owners Advisory Council. As far as I... I'll try to speak up for those who want to hear me. I represent the Builders Institute, the Apartment Owners Advisory Council, and a number of landlords in Austin. I could tell you about my 20-plus years of experience dealing with the division of homes and community renewal and what that will mean to the property owners in your community and the negative impacts. I could tell you a lot of what the mayor has already said in our opening remarks. But I think it's more important to hear from some of the studies that establish that if what your goal is is to improve the quality of housing, improve the quantity of housing, and improve housing in general, that this is not the way to do it. First of all, it is clear that property owners and landlords have an objective, generally speaking, that is financial. The result of adopting ETPA is likely to be the displacement of lower and lower-income populations because landlords know that the group that benefits from rent control needs lower rent, and they will look, when the rents are fixed, for other factors to select tenants. And those tenants will stay. And the tenants that are here today, here, I don't mean here in this room today, but in occupancy today, will not move, and you will lose all of the units in housing stock today from the market. As time goes by, the studies show that units will deteriorate. Tenants will not be happy about the lack of maintenance, and you will expect and see an increase in complaints and a type of deterioration, which is not your goal today, I am sure. The studies show and the data indicate that landlords spend less on controllable operating costs, such as payroll, repair, maintenance, administration, et cetera, and reduced capital expenditures. So there's only one result from that, which is housing deterioration is more likely in rent control than without. Additionally, which the mayor touched on, is confirmation that rent control results not only in reduction in taxes, but more generally in the loss of property value and lower assessments that decrease the revenue obtained from property taxes. Ultimately, rent control diminishes the value of everybody's property because the taxes go up for some, diminishing their value. And the fact of rent control or ETPA on other properties diminishes their value. I can't see the... Okay, yes. I want a quote from an article, and I'm going to submit all these to the board, but now that I see my time is running short. This is an article from 2013, so fairly recent. Only one member on a panel, by Adam Olubah, "The Folly of Rent Control, or Bad Ideas Never Die." Only one member on a panel of 42 economists agreed that limiting rent increases has a positive impact on the amount and quality of broadly affordable rental housing. Over 93% of economists agreed that a ceiling... Over 93% of economists agreed that a ceiling on rents reduces the quality and quantity of housing availability. As any landlord will tell you, a good tenant is priceless. Renters in an uncontrolled market are far from powerless. As in any free market, if they're unhappy with what is an offer, then they can simply take their business elsewhere. This dynamic, more than anything the town could ever do...
Okay, thank you very much.
...the best guarantor of a fair and efficient rental.
Thank you very much. Oh, man, we never would have gotten through all that. No, I'm just kidding. Who's next? Madam Clerk. Oh, I'm sorry. We have the next name.
Good evening. Robert D'Arrio, 45, Hunter Street, Osning, New York. In the interest of letting people know, I am a landlord. I have a two-family house. I have one apartment. I have had the same tenant for the last seven years, and she hasn't had a rent increase. She does have a lease, and it has stayed in force, except that I've never raised her rent. That said, I am a proponent of affordable housing. Osning needs affordable housing. But ETPA does not create a single unit of affordable housing, not one. Osning needs to ensure that substandard housing is corrected. ETPA has nothing to do that, and it only talks about buildings built before the end of 1974 with six or more units. I think every apartment in Osning should be safe so that the people living in it are safe and our first responders are safe when they have to go there for a fire, police, or medical emergency. We need to work together to craft local laws that address the affordable housing concerns of all stakeholders. There are some good ideas in ETPA. Let's use them in local laws. That'll be more effective. Let's not abrogate our local government's responsibility to respond to tenant landlord disputes by ceding the jurisdiction to an outside agency that admitted that recently, in last week's public hearing, that they don't have the resources to adequately adjudicate complaints in a timely matter regarding the ETPA buildings they already control. We need local legislation that gives real enforcement powers to the Osning Landlord-Tenant Commission to make sure that disputes are handled expeditiously for all tenants and all landlords in all rental units in Osning, not just those buildings with six or more units built before the end of 1974. We need local legislation that requires a standardized lease, an agreement that protects all tenants and landlords in all rental units in Osning, not just those built before the end of 1974 with six or more units. We need to have our Assemblywoman and our state senator craft resolutions that will allow tax incentives for owners who upgrade their properties rather than penalizing them by assessing higher taxes based on those improvements. We need to have legislation that makes it easier to have code enforcement officers access unsafe housing, such as those with more electric meters than the number of units zoned for the building. There's a lot of that here in Osning, and it's unsafe, and ETPA does not address this. We need to gather together landlords, tenants, elected officials, and public policy experts to craft legislation at the county or state level that will provide a fair and inclusive method of rent stabilization for all rental units in Osning, not just those built before the end of 1974 or with six or more units. ETPA doesn't do the job. It's like putting a Band-Aid on a sucking chest wound. We need affordable housing. We need safe, affordable housing. It's good to do things. It's better to do the right things, but it's best to do the right things right. I ask the Village Board to say no to ETPA.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, Gene DeGrandi.
Hi, good evening, Board and Mayor.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I understand there's a lot of apartments that are substandard, and there are some people that have real concerns. I agree to that. But I'm here to talk from my experience. Thirty-three years in Osning, in a home, the last five years in an apartment, which is owned by a corporation. This corporation also owns at least four others in Osning. Recently, this past year, I had to resign my lease in July, and it was increased $220 in one year. That was high to take, to begin with, but there's a neighbor that has the same apartment that has been totally renovated, all new appliances, wash rugs, everything is new, new bathrooms, new kitchen, everything. They're paying $250, $50 less than I am. And that was my argument. Why can't I either get that fancy apartment or don't increase my rent so high? I was getting to the point where I was almost, I almost wanted to be evicted because I was strong on my stance of not getting the increase. Well, that led me to read my lease. I can't even tell you how many times, a lot of times. And the message that comes through with the entire, how many pages? Landlords have all the rights. For instance, if I took that eviction notice, and it takes a process to get in the courts, and I went to court with the landlord, I would have to pay their legal fees. So I'm making things worse. It could be this particular lease, I don't know what it is. And they do have a lot of substandards apartments. There's two right next door to me, nobody can live in it because the floors are sinking, and they're all, they're not doing anything about it, nothing. They do spend a lot of time and money on making the landscape pretty, and they build this wonderful office for their employees, but the apartments are not being cared to. What they are doing is making tenants, I'm making might not be the right word, tenants move because of the apartment rent increase or the apartment's upkeep. And when they move, they do the same thing. They put the, all this new stuff, beautiful apartment, and they raise the rent considerably. So what's becoming a affordable housing, which was, is more or less the lower of the rates of apartments in Osning... I lost that thought, sorry about that. Senior moment. Also, and I don't think the corporations have, I don't know for sure, answered the survey on vacancy, but I can tell you out of 20 units where I live, there are three to six apartments vacant, not including the two that need major repairs. So as I said at the beginning, landlords have all the control, and the tenants have no control, and we can't fight the landlords.
Okay, Peter Johnson.
Hi, I'm Peter Johnson. I'm a landlord. I have a six-family unit. I'm also a fourth-generation Osning resident. My parents were both landlords. My mom was a realtor specializing in working-class real estate. I also, I feel like I have some unique insights into the operation of small landlord-type of setup with 10 to 1 units. I worked as a handyman for many years between here and Peekskill, and I've done, I've been in a lot of just this type of housing that we're talking about. Let's see. Being a landlord is a tough job, and it's not for everybody. Many people hate it, and many people can't even do it. When I was a toddler, my parents bought a multifamily home on Eastern Avenue, and it was in very bad shape. As we lived there, my dad fixed it up. There was an abusive couple on the third floor who threw their garbage off the porch and left it there. They were protected by rent control. My parents had responsibility without authority, responsibility for the building and no authority over the tenant. It's kind of like a substitute teacher shaking, like I remember seeing in middle school, where the kid's throwing the desk out the window. That teacher was responsible for managing the classroom, but she had no authority over the students. And let's face it, Osning's not Disneyland. We have a prison here. And I believe we're in danger if we implemented this ETPA widely where landlords can't control the tenants, they can't get out a bad tenant. I believe it would create slums because of the type of things I've seen. When a bad tenant comes into a building, they cause good tenants to leave. And I've seen tenants bring safety issues, like they're dangerous, they're violent. I've seen them bring bugs. I've seen them be abusive. And I don't mean to say that I think tenants are bad. I mean, I married a tenant. I'm cool with, you know, a lot of tenants are like family. But responsibility without authority is a horrible thing. Now, I had a tenant that basically threatened another tenant with a machete recently. This guy, and his brother came back and waved a baseball bat at him, and he knocked the other tenant out. You know, landlords protect you from tenants like that, and if you can't throw those people out, you're in trouble. But that's something obvious. There was a police report, that guy was out. But, you know, I did retrieve my dad from the emergency room after getting a rent from one of these places. This is Osning, and this is why landlords need the ability to get rid of a bad tenant. I also worked in a building as a handyman where one of the biggest drug kingpins in Westchester was. He had, he had like muggery guys in the hall. This was on Spring and Williams. I've done a lot of work, and I've had a lot of experience. My mother was a real estate broker. I knew a lot of landlords in these low-level houses. In my dad's building, a woman brought bedbugs. In my, in the house that my sister still lives in, we had tenants that brought cockroaches. I kicked them, I kicked the people right out. The house never had cockroaches before. This, but I don't mean to say that this is all tenants. Excuse me, excuse me. I don't mean to say this is all tenants, but there are bad tenants.
Thank you.
Hi, everybody. Good evening. My name is Cal Fishbein, and I'd like to speak from the perspective of a family that has been involved in Clinton Terrace on Crotton Avenue for over 40 years. I have personally worked in the building for over 27 years, starting with cleaning the basement. We've seen many ups and downs, many changes. We've renovated the building and apartments many times without the need for state intervention. The diversity of our building reflects the broader Osning community that we are proud to be a part of. We value our residents, and as their leases come up with us, we give them a discount if the market rents have gone up. This especially inures to the benefit of a longer-term residence. Our current actual rent roll is tens of thousands of dollars under our market rent roll on an annualized basis. This is a proper sense of community, but it's also good business sense. We don't need this to be imposed by state law. Hampering the application and renewal process by putting it under New York state domain and not local ownership will cause tension and bad blood between landlords and tenants and make managing the building, which is my day-to-day job, almost impossible. Osning has had committees and community liaisons to work out landlord and tenant issues. There are many local options that should be considered, as the mayor pointed out, before considering ETPA, which is being pushed mainly by special interest groups, many from outside of Osning. Our building has seen a 12% increase in our assessment this year alone. Taxes in the last decade are up over 30% from an already high starting basis. This has really outpaced our actual rent growth, and that's not even including utilities, union wages, and the renovations and maintenance to our building. Restricting rents without restricting those other increases will really hinder landlords' abilities to upkeep our buildings and keep them in good order. The broader New York State track record of ETPA since the 1970s has shown that while it does benefit some tenants by keeping their existing apartment rents low, it curtails values, hinders maintenance, and lowers the ability of landlords to run an effective, maintained building. We should keep local decisions regarding local real estate in local hands. At a minimum, we should not rely on contrived and very inaccurate rental studies, and I know because the way they engage my own building is just off, conducted by, to be conducted by folks with biased interests. This issue should be discussed further as part of the campaigning for the November 6th election. Let all candidates running for mayor and council straightforwardly declare their position on this important issue and give Osning voters a chance to be heard and empowered, not dictated to. Thank you.
Okay, I think Pastor Sean Jones.
Good afternoon. I have to apologize for my voice. I've been sick in bed all day, but I came out because this issue was more important to me than my health. My name is Sean Ellison Jones. I have the pleasure of serving as a proud pastor at St. Betham Church here in Osning, which has been a pillar in our community for 127 years. I'm a resident at 15 Overton Road. I'm here to encourage each board member to affirm the need for legislation for the Emergency Tenant Protection Act. It is my prayer that you would consider people over politics. There are hundreds upon hundreds of families that will be affected based upon how you vote will go. I am not here to demonize landlords, yet it is important to realize that landlords are not the only residents in Osning, but there are tenants who are here on today, tenants who represent other families, not outside interests, but people who live in Osning who care about this important legislation. I pray that as you consider this vote, that you will also understand that I'm concerned over the last two years, the mayor has said, "For this issue has gone from a people issue to a hotly contested political issue." This issue has begun to tear the unity, the fabric of our community apart. I believe it is time for us to vote on this important legislation. We've had multiple public sessions, we've had multiple studies, multiple community sessions, where persons have been here, learned, and to share. I know that ETPA is not a perfect law, but there are no perfect laws. Yet there are countless eligible voters in Osning who can no longer afford to wait. ETPA can be one of the many steps toward real, affordable, and low-cost housing that collaborates with not just residents, but also elected officials such as yourself. Again, this is not about policy, but about real people. I believe that if, I believe that all of you care about Osning and its residents, and it's my prayer that after hearing today, that you will close this session and vote to affirm and specifically vote for ETPA to continue to show your love and consideration for all residents of Osning. God bless you. God bless you.
Okay. ETPA. When do we want it?
Now.
Okay, um, Susie Daniels?
Good evening, Mayor.
Welcome.
Board. My name is Susie Daniels. I'm a voter, a CVH member leader, and a leader at the St. of Bethlehem Baptist Church. I have lived in Austin for sixteen and a half years. I have seen good friends of mine who live, whose lives were thrown into chaos when landlords refused to renew their lease. I have seen cherished, cherished family displaced from this village. I'm here to say that it's time to pass the Emergency Tenant Protection Act. I have been, I have been in this struggle to address the housing crisis that faces our community since two thousand and fifteen. Some of you may remember when at the CVH Assembly in November of two thousand and fifteen, I asked the mayor and the deputy mayor, Cartman, whether or not they believe a housing crisis existed in Austin. We went on to fight hard for recognition that indeed there is a crisis of housing plaguing many families in our community. A crisis that demand action and practical solution. We have come a long way since two thousand and fifteen and yet, practical solution have yet to, have yet to be enacted. We as working class people of this village don't have the luxury of time. We need action to protect thousands of family in Austin who current, who currently live in fear. Fear of making a complaint about dangerous building condition, fear of another drastic rent increase, fear of not having their lease renewed. We are well aware that we don't have as much power as the millionaire landlords and the political machine that opposes us. But we have faith that this council would do the right thing. We have faith that this council would put people over politics. Tonight, you as a board have the opportunity to take action to make our village stronger by enacting the Emergency Tenant Protection Act. We see this as the bare minimal, the first step on the road to safety and stability for all our families. I urge you to seize this moment. I urge you to pass the ETPA tonight. Thank you.
What do we want?
ETPA.
When do we want it?
Now.
Uh, Mike Baldotti?
Good evening, Mike Baldotti, fourteen Cedar Lane Terrace. Um, this is obviously a very emotional issue. This has been going on for quite a long time. I could speak to a lot of the issues about, you know, an owner's perspective and this and that, but you know, I, I kind of bring a, a unique perspective here. I'm an owner of buildings, I provide affordable housing. I'm a village resident. My family goes back three generations. And I served on the local board for a long time and I've seen a lot of good things happen here in Austin, but this definitely will not help Austin in any fashion. And, and truthfully, I'm, I'm a bit ashamed by some of the behavior of our board to allow such divisiveness to come into this community. I've been here my whole life, I've never seen such a divisive situation. And it's, it's very upsetting. You can't accomplish anything good when you have all this divisiveness. So shame on whoever, you know, allowed this to happen. As far as I'm, you know, from where I'm sitting here, I'm kind of thinking that, you know, there's an interesting standard. Part of our community was being subject to a federal agency and to the village board's credit, they did a resolution saying, hey, we're concerned, we're going to stand with you. Well, what's the difference if another segment of our community is being, uh, under the purview of a state agency and the segment of the community has same concerns? Why can't we, you know, why can't we work it out? Is this purely a political thing? And we're against the federal government, but we're, it's okay for the state to come in here and take our, our rights away from us, where the village can work this together. You know, we could sit down and work things out. And look, I'll also talk about, you know, my time on the board, on the planning board, where two months ago, we sat down and talked about affordable housing. And you know, nobody has, is more passionate about affordable housing than me. I know what I'm talking about. I provide affordable housing. But what gets, gets me upset is that after an intelligent civil conversation two months ago with planning board, zoning board, and village board, you, you guys said, look, let's take some time out, let's revisit this, let's get this right. This matter with ETPA rent control is no different. So again, I offer myself up to you guys, I want to be part of the solution. Rushing to enact something that's going to be harmful, that we don't know all the benefits for in, in the long term, is the worst thing we can do. I just ask you, please do not act, enact ETPA, it would be the worst thing for this community. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Sean Riley?
Good evening, everyone. My name is Sean Riley. I'm a community voices heard member and leader, but I am no outsider to Austin. I'm a third generation resident of Austin as my family's called Austin Home for sixty-five years. I personally lived myself here for forty years. Until recently, I lived in an ETPA eligible complex owned by Eagle Rock. I'm now a tenant who will not benefit from ETPA, will fully support it as I've seen and experienced why it is needed in Austin. I've seen many good residents who are tenants leave this community, a community that devoted their time in bettering, and a community that has benefited from their volunteering and good deeds. This is, comes from one of two reasons. There's extreme rent increases of over twelve percent and they're unpredictable. There are hard working class people that contribute and care about the community being pushed out. My rent increased almost four hundred dollars a month over the past two years and I personally saw over half of a seventy unit complex change tenants within two and a half years due to the higher rent increases or not having leases renewed because they complained about the basic maintenance issues that weren't being done. It almost happened to me in June of two thousand and sixteen, only due to a friend who was a lawyer called their corporate office and suddenly we got our lease renewed, but with a hundred and eighty dollar increase. Some of the new tenants don't even stay more than a year because they're pushed out the next year with more unpredictable outrageous increases. These increases have created a rattling door of residents who happen to be tenants and that's not good for any community. A long-term resident will certainly care, respect, give back, and do more for their community versus a short-term resident. ETPA is just another tool available to keep Austin strong by having long-term residents that care about where they live be able to afford to stay in their homes. To the members of the board of trustees and mayor, a board who's prided itself on creating progressive policies, I have two questions for you. How is a progressive board, has it taken you so long to protect the Austin residents that are tenants? Why is Austin so far behind its neighboring villages when it comes to passing ETPA? Without ETPA, you're letting out of town, big corporate landlords slowly change the demographic of this town. Austin prides itself on its diversity for a village in Westchester. Our diverse community benefits all its residents, including students in our schools. Having classrooms made up of all its necessities teaches our students to respect and accept those different from them, which is a very valuable life skill in this day and age. Austin tenants cannot wait any longer. We have waited through study after study and I will point out, set the record straight, CVH did not initiate the study two years ago. It was used as a stall tactic to, and two years later, we're still talking about the same thing. We need to enact ETPA. We need to keep Austin affordable for all tenants and keep us stronger by voting and passing for ETPA tonight. Thank you.
Okay, Genevieve Roach?
Yeah.
When do we want it?
Now.
Genevieve Roach?
My name is Genevieve Roach and I'm a former member of the Westchester Rent Guidelines Board, where I served as one of two tenant representatives from two thousand and ten through two thousand and sixteen. I have been a tenant advocate for over twenty-five years and have resided in Westchester for more than fourteen of those years. I am also a corporate attorney who has served as assistant general counsel and general counsel for three national accounting firms. And I have used my background in and penchant for number crunching to help the board analyze the rent guideline board data regarding landlord revenues and expenses. The analysis we instituted in two thousand and ten and refined over the years has helped us better understand the numbers submitted by landlords in their annual DHCR surveys, which analyses with the benefit of hindsight have proven remarkably accurate. So much so, the DHCR began incorporating our calculations into their post-hearing explanatory statements. Prelimarily, I want to apologize for not having a prepared statement with a more detailed analysis of this past summer's owner survey numbers. Unfortunately, a fatal family accident on Monday, which some of you may have read about in the news, has made it impossible for me to do more tonight than make a brief appearance, which I am doing to underscore how important it is to me and for the community and, and to underscore what a no-brainer it is to pass an ETPA in Austin. I have however, brought a few handouts from this past summer's rent guideline board hearings, including a copy of my testimony and the DHCR calculations of landlord profits based on landlord submitted survey data to make one of my two points. First, owners net operating profit from ETPA units continues to increase year over year, even as the number of stabilized units in Westchester declines. My second point is to help dispel the complete illogic of the fear tactics owners have been using regarding the effect on property tax revenues should ETPA be passed. On the first point, based on their own voluntarily submitted numbers, landlords of rent stabilized units are far from hurting, with net operating income estimated last year to hit a robust thirty-nine percent. The total number of regulated units, however, which once numbered eighty thousand, is now down to fewer than twenty-six thousand. The affordable housing emergency in Westchester is very real, but the claim that ETPA hurts landlords is a shibboleth. Since two thousand and eleven, both cash flow and net operating income before depreciation and interest of Westchester's rent stabilized units has steadily increased, with profits going from thirty-three percent in two thousand and eleven to thirty-nine percent last year. That represents the profit for regulated apartments after expenses. Not a bad investment and there is no excuse for an inability to maintain their properties. ETPA is not financially hurtful to landlords who realize a more than healthy profit, just somewhat less than they do on market rate apartments whose rents are artificially inflated due to the affordable housing shortage. But ETPA is undeniably helpful to tenants and to the community at large. Beyond keeping rent increases in check, rent regulation just as importantly codifies tenants' rights. Rights to renewals, to preservation of lease terms, to repairs and maintenance, which obviously can be afforded, given their profits, and to be able to live without harassment and the fear of being forced out. Thank you, Ms. Roach.
May I skip to my second point to make the one sentence?
This is a point of clarification, not a conversation. You said you didn't have prepared notes, so I'm going to have to ask you, but could you repeat where you live, please?
I live in Hastings, on Hudson.
You live in Hastings, okay. And did you say, I'm just kidding, because you don't have a prepared statement, did you?
Actually, the statement, you have the statement.
Oh, we do have it?
Yes.
So there's been a reduction?
I don't have the analysis of this past summer's landlord numbers.
There's been a reduction of eighty thousand to twenty thousand units, did you say, in Westchester?
It was eighty thousand and is now about twenty-five thousand, twenty-six thousand.
Right, so there are fewer affordable units.
Far fewer, and yet landlords' profits from those fewer apartments are even higher.
But there are fewer units now than there were in the past.
Far fewer.
Okay, thanks. That's all I had to ask.
I would, I would ask, leaving the board, I didn't address the second point about the... Thank you, thank you. We have to allow time for everyone to be able to speak. Thank you. Well, then I would ask that, I, I've enclosed a copy of this statement and I would ask that you please, uh... Thank you, Ms. Roach. ...review that. Thank you.
Okay. Jack Doyle?
When do we want it? Now.
Okay, I have to, I have to ask, we have a room full of people. We have been here for more than an hour and I have a feeling we're going to be here for quite some time and we very much want to hear from everybody. There are a lot of very interesting and compelling points being made. Please do not include chanting. Thank you.
Are you, I'm sorry?
Good evening. My name is Jack Doyle and I thank you for the opportunity to be here. I am neither a resident of Austin, nor an attorney, nor a reverend, nor an economist. But what I bring here tonight is my experience for the last twenty-three years as the executive director of an organization known as New Settlement Apartments. And what I'd like to say is that all of the units that we have are all protected under the New York State Tenant Protection Act, Emergency Tenant Protection Act. And I think that has meant a couple of things. One is it has provided incredible stability to the housing that we have. We have families who have raised their children, who now have grandchildren, and who have lived in our buildings for twenty-three years or more. They represent the backbone of the community in which the housing is located. They are civil servants, they are home health aides, they are hospital workers, they are workers in the hospitality industry, they are teachers and teachers aides. Among the families who we serve, thirty percent are formerly homeless, but because they have had the anchor of decent affordable housing, they're able to establish for themselves a life for them and their families that is affordable. Many people suggest that if you have the type of rent protections that this act would provide, that that leaves landlords unable to obtain financing, to not only maintain their buildings, but to upgrade them. And I must say, that has not been our experience. We have had no inability to attract funding, conventional financing, and other types of funding in order to improve the buildings that we own and we operate. On a personal note, you know, I, I grew up myself, I, I've never lived in a house, I've always lived in an apartment. I grew up in an apartment with my mother and father and six siblings. And while the owner of that building, who lived nowhere near where the building was located, viewed it as an investment property, which I fully understand, to us, for all the years we lived there, it was our home. It was our home. Being a renter doesn't mean that where you live is not still your home, and I think you all realize that. And I think it's something important to keep in mind. And I will close just by saying that I think that renters need and deserve protection so that they can stay in their homes and not carry an inordinate burden of rent that is disproportionate to what their income is. So, thank you very much.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Board. My name's Aaron Spring. Just a quick disclaimer, I'm not a village resident, I'm not a tenant, I'm not a landlord. I just want to offer some objective facts here, based off of the studies I've seen. First, during this commentary, I've heard a few things we need to keep Austin affordable, but in order for us to do that, Austin had to be affordable in the first place. Unfortunately, for renters and for landlords, it's unaffordable. We see, I, I personally believe that those in favor of ETPA have a good heart and their heart is in the right place, but I think the solution to the rent problem is not government. I think government is the problem. Because every year, whether it's the village, I know the village hasn't raised taxes in a few years, but property taxes for everybody else have raised in terms of town taxes, county, state, you just saw a federal tax bill that raised, that limited our salt tax reductions. Therefore, taxes have gone up. If we want to be affordable in Austin, if we want rents to go down, we need taxes to go down as well. In order for that to happen, we need to start promoting business. Look at Croton Avenue, Upper Croton Avenue, or Croton Avenue, rather. There's not a lot of businesses there, there's a lot of vacant stores, vacant... There's not a lot of businesses there, there's a lot of vacant stores, vacant lots. We need to find a way to bring business in, we need to find a way to create revenue, and if we do that, we can lower taxes, and then through that, we can lower rents. We also, we need lower county taxes, lower state taxes. I know the federal tax bill just hurt New York, as I said, but the reality is, a lot of the people on this board know our county legislator, they know our state assemblywoman, they know our state senator. We need to work together as a municipality, renters and landlords united, to make it permanently affordable. This solution, if we lose $1.6 million in tax revenue, and you divide that by 5,000 single-family homes, that then makes the tax burden $320 per person. How is that any less egregious than a $180 to $200 increase in rent per year? My apologies, disregard that last point, but... So, in other words, 10 to 15% increases in rent are crazy. I agree with that. But I'm not sure that ETPA is a solution. I think it's a temporary solution to a long-term problem, but the long-term problem is taxes are too high. We need relief. If you get that relief, it will then go to the renters. At least, that's what I truly believe would happen. So, in other words, I don't really have a stake in this, doesn't affect my taxes, doesn't affect my rent, but I think we need to be objective in the fact that Austin has to be affordable for everybody, and we can't just use a non-perfect law. I understand not all laws are perfect, but is there anything else we can do that appeases both sides? Can we come together and work together to appease both sides? So, it's not one group gets a tax increase or one group gets a rent increase. We need some sort of balance, and that's why we elected you. Or I didn't, because I don't live in Village, but that's why everybody else elected you. So, please, just, you know, I ask that you listen to everybody, and everybody be respectful of each other, but at the end of the day, we're all Austin, and we need to come together as one to protect both landlords and tenants. And that's all I got to say.
Julie Gross?
I'm a homeowner, homeowner, a homeowner, who has lived in our village for 50 years in the same house, raised three daughters in the community, taught math and computer science at the Austin High School, and it was all a gift. Living in this community has been a gift. I ask you to vote yes for tonight for the Emergency Tenant Protection Act, ETPA. We have a profound need to support families living in our village who are in danger of losing their homes due to uncontrolled rent increases, lack of protection against eviction, and lack of affordable housing. I will not be fooled by some lobby, which most recently distributed a slanderous flyer in my neighborhood, and sorry for him that I caught him, and we had a chat, but, and based on a study conducted by Elliot Skar, an economist from Columbia University, there will be no impact on property values or property taxes with the passing of the ETPA. We know this based on the 1919 other communities in Westchester that already have ETPA. Based on the experience of other towns in Westchester, such as Dobbs Ferry, Tarrytown, Sleepy Hollow, so on, I see only how the ETPA will strengthen our whole community. ETPA is both a question of conscience and a practical question of what will make our community a healthy, safe place for all of us. Just as an aside, I grew up in affordable housing in Mount Vernon. In my family, we lived in three rooms, and it was lovely apartment, it was kept beautifully, we had good Italian meals, everything was just fine. And now I'm a teacher, and I, you know, living here, and I own my own home. It worked. Austin has been here before in this particular problem. In the early '70s, urban renewal came to our village. Buildings on Spring Street and Main Street were to be taken down without concern for those about to lose their homes. No replacement housing was to be made available. People, families, who have made Austin their home for so many years, were forced out of their apartments with no affordable place to live. At that time, I joined the United Austin Party, a political party, to help create affordable housing for those displaced. And so came the building of Clermont Gardens. I discovered recently that Clermont Gardens' term of affordability expired, and that is now owned by a corporate management company. I believe it's Eagle Rock, I'm not sure. Upon vacancy, upon vacancy, people leaving that affordable housing, the apartments at Clermont Gardens are now offered to the public at market prices. So here we are again. I am more concerned than ever for the stability and well-being of our long-term residents. I look on our village board to act wisely and to seize this opportunity to pass ETPA tonight. I've spoken with someone who may soon be affected by displacement. Her children are excited to return to school this week to see their friends again. She and her husband have been a contributing member, contributing members of our village. To leave here would be detrimental to her and her family. Supporting ETPA is both a question of conscience, a practical question, that would make our community a healthy, safe place for all of us. Repeat. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
My name is Michael McKee. I'm the treasurer of the Tenants Political Action Committee, which is an organization that works to elect pro-tenant candidates to elected office. And I am here for one reason, which is to urge you to opt into the Emergency Tenant Protection Act and to do it tonight. I think this has gone on much too long. This fight goes back to the previous administration, and I think that it's well overdue. I have worked, in my long career, I have worked with tenants in Westchester County since 1972. I worked with tenants who were successful in winning enactment of the Emergency Tenant Protection Act in 1974. I helped some of them organize campaigns to persuade their municipalities to opt into the ETPA. In 1996, '97, I helped found a Westchester County-wide coalition. This was in the aftermath, you might remember Joe Bruno, who at the time was the state senate majority leader, who stated that he would not renew the rent laws when they came up for renewal in Albany the following year. And more recently, I have worked with tenants in Westchester on influencing the Westchester County Rent Guidelines Board. So I'm very familiar with Westchester County, even though I live in New York City. I was here two years ago, in this room. I remember vividly compelling testimony from tenant leader after tenant leader begging you to protect them. Many of them are not here anymore because they've been displaced. They have been forced to give up their homes because of the inaction of this board. It is time you did this. There has been a lot of nonsense talked about here tonight and earlier about the supposed negative effects of rent regulation. Madam Mayor, I have to say, your statement at the beginning of the hearing was a compendium of errors, so many errors that I couldn't possibly rebut them in the time that I have available to me now, but I think you made up your mind about this a long time ago. I think it is time that this board acts and that you do it tonight. There's one overarching reason why you should do this, and that is that the tenants of Austin deserve protections. They deserve protection from arbitrary rent increases. They deserve protection from arbitrary eviction. They deserve the right to be secure in their homes. And it's nice to talk about stronger code enforcement, it's nice to talk about creating new mixed-use housing, all of that can be helpful, but it is no substitute for protecting people now. I'm urging you to do this, and I'm urging you to do it now, tonight. Thank you very much.
Hello, my name is Franco Milio. My family owns and manages 1516 James Street and 6668 Croton Avenue. We have been a landlord in Austin for over 10 years. One of the main reasons we decided to invest here was because ETPA, because ETPA did not exist. I strongly oppose adopting ETPA. While many people may think ETPA will be beneficial, I have firsthand knowledge on how it causes more harm than good in communities, creates sour relationships between landlord and tenants, and hurts tenants and the very people it intends to protect. ETPA has been in existence since the mid-1970s. Yonkers, Mount Vernon, Dobbs Ferry, Irvington, and various other municipalities have adopted it early on. What has ETPA done for these cities, villages, and towns in the past 40 years? From what I see, it has created huge disparities in rents. A tenant renting a two- or three-bedroom apartment at the current rent of, say, $200 in the 1980s would now be paying less than $800. I know this because I have many tenants like this, many even have rents in the $400 to $500 range. This brings me to my next point about how the housing market is worsened by ETPA. Many of these tenants nowadays are empty nesters but are in a tough spot. They have no incentive to leave, especially when they are getting such a bargain. I have young families with children living in a one-bedroom apartment but are unable to find a larger unit. The market is essentially distorted because of ETPA. It seems to be creating a larger housing crisis. There have also been instances where a family member will miraculously appear just in time to succeed the apartment. That's a whole other discussion, but nevertheless, another abuse created by ETPA. ETPA is not income or need-based. I have many tenants who can afford to pay market rent but are paying below market. Why should these tenants get what is essentially a subsidy? An idea can be for the village government to figure out a way in which to give a subsidy of sorts to families who comply with various income and other need-based conditions. Perhaps those who are victims of domestic violence, who serve this country, are homeless, you get the point. ETPA makes it extremely difficult to, nearly impossible, to terminate the tenancy at the end of the lease term. One might think this is a good thing, but it's actually more of a problem. Without ETPA, when a lease expires, both landlord and tenant can elect not to renew. It's totally fair this way and keeps both the landlord-tenant relationship in balance. Under ETPA, a landlord must offer a lease renewal or prove in court of law that the tenant is a nuisance. Do you realize how difficult this can be? I have had cases of drug dealing, disruptive tenants, and all I could do, I could barely do anything but watch my good tenants become frustrated, leave, and worse of all, become labeled as the bad building in the neighborhood. This is extremely troubling for the owners, the neighbors, who have to put up with this, and the community at large. As I mentioned before, over time, ETPA creates disparities with rents. Historically speaking, in ETPA communities, the longer you live in the apartment, the lower the rent. All this while, we are required to pay current market prices for repairs and capital improvements. Since rents are below market, this also has an impact on the value of the property. One recourse we have is to argue to lower the property taxes. This creates an even larger burden for the community to help subsidize ETPA, and this is still insufficient. Finally, there recently was a study conducted to see if there was, in fact, a housing emergency. While I may have concerns about the study, I feel as though it fails to answer the question about landlords, such as my family, who rent apartments at or below the HUD fair market value. Upon speaking to other landlords, I discovered we have been renting at or below market in an effort to have little or no vacancy, so now we face essentially being punished. In summary, from my experience dealing with ETPA, it has been, and will continue to be something poisonous to landlords, tenants, and the community. Vote no to ETPA. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Milio. Thank you. I would ask that the folks in the room allow me to thank the person and let them step aside rather than just chiming in. Okay, Marcella Matones?
Good evening, and thank you for the opportunity to testify. My name is Marcella Matanes, and I'm a tenant organizer and advocate at Neighbors Helping Neighbors, a nonprofit HUD-certified housing counseling agency in Brooklyn, New York, that works to organize tenants around their rights and to strengthen rent regulation. I am here tonight on behalf of NHN's parent organization, the Fifth Avenue Committee, FAC. FAC is a 40-year-old nonprofit comprehensive community development corporation and neighborhood preservation corporation in Brooklyn, New York, whose mission is to advance social and economic justice. FAC directly serves over 5,500 low- and moderate-income New Yorkers annually through a range of programs, including affordable housing development and management. FAC has developed 900 units of affordable housing, manages approximately 500 units, and has a development pipeline of over 1,200 additional units of affordable housing. All the units that FAC develops and manages are rent-regulated. As the Huffington Post recently wrote in June of this year, "The Affordable Housing Crisis in the United States is a ticking time bomb." For decades, housing costs have risen faster than incomes. Since 1960, renters' median earnings have gone up 5%, while rents have spiked 61%. Homeowners earn 50% more while home prices have gone up 112%. This has obvious human costs. As the National Low-Income Housing Coalition reported, "A growing share of the nation's renters cannot afford to live in the cities where they work." In 2016, nearly half of all renters were considered rent-burdened. They spend more than 30% of their income toward rent. The need for affordable housing appears to be clear in Austin as well. As you know, the multiple-family vacancy study, which the city commissioned in 2016, showed that the vacancy rate in Austin was just over 3% for all multifamily units in buildings with six or more units constructed before 1974. If the Village of Austin were to adopt the Emergency Tenant Protection Act, hundreds of families would have the benefit of protections against significant rent increases, which could lead to displacement, something that is all too common, especially when we see vacancy rates below 5%. Also, rent stabilization provides renters with protections for building maintenance issues, something that cities in the recent policy framework on the Village's housing needs assessment. Critics of ETPA have suggested that ETPA would reduce a building's net operating income, making it harder for building owners to meet the financial costs of building maintenance. The Fifth Avenue Committee, who owns and manages approximately 500 rent-stabilized units in buildings that range in sizes from 3 to 80 units, has not found this to be the case. What is important is that an owner manages costs effectively by investing in building systems and fixtures that are efficient and is consistent in their communications with tenants and respects their rights. What is important is that developers and predatory investors don't speculate on rent-stabilized housing, paying or lending more than what the rent roll of the property will support, taking on debts that then leads to harassment and displacement of existing tenants and often the loss of affordable housing. The affordable housing crisis is impacting cities and villages across this country. The Village of Austin has identified a number of policies which could help address the housing needs that exist in the community. Voting to support ETPA is one important strategy to ensure that tenants have rights in the negotiation over leases and increases in rents with building owners. Those rights provide pieces of mind for families and increase stability in communities such as Austin.
Thank you very much.
Good evening, Mayor, Board members. My name is Myra Arrington. I've lived at 822 Pines Bridge Road for nearly four years with my wife. I'm a member of Community Voices Heard and a lifelong Westchester resident. The vacancy study's finished, Austin has less than 5% vacancy, so it's... so it's time to pass the ETPA. It's the first step to provide a safety net for Austin residents and is desperately needed. Not after another year-long study, not at the beginning of the fiscal year, not after the midterms now. A few months could mean moving or homelessness for some of our neighbors and many people here tonight. Earlier today, a trio of lawyers representing a property management company attempted to have a restraining order placed on two members of the board and prevent them from being here tonight. Additionally, they want to preempt any vote from taking place tonight. Fortunately, as we can see, the attempt failed, and the board is free to do its job without interference. This 11th-hour attempt by a corporation to silence the voices of our elected officials is unforgivable and only exposes their contempt for our representatives. ETPA is like the Constitution, a promising start which requires more work. I would urge the board to adopt, in addition to the ETPA, the Senior Citizen Rent Increase Exemption DRE and the Disability Rent Increase Exemption DRE as adjuncts to the ETPA, as were mentioned at the presentation of the vacancy study. In the end, this is really a question about whether or not we want to have a moral community, one that cares for its neighbors and people who are most vulnerable. My wife and I aren't going to be people who, anytime in the near future, are going to be impacted by rent insecurity. We have an annual income of well over $100,000. So, we could easily live anywhere we want, but we still choose to live where we are, here in Austin, because we like this community. And for the foreseeable future, we're going to be here. In the end, you work for us. We expect you to legislate in the best interest of the village, and ETPA undoubtedly makes Austin better. Despite concerns by some and attempts by real outside agitators, I'm calling for you to pass ETPA tonight. Thank you.
Mark Monroe.
Good evening. I'm Mark Monroe. I've lived in the village for 33 years, all of them as a homeowner. I want to live in a diverse place. My wife and I raise three children here in Austin, and they got to know all kinds of people. They grew up with diversity, all kinds of diversity, including economic diversity. They had some friends whose families struggled to get by to pay the rent. And I think they're better off for having gotten to know all kinds of people. And I think I'm better off, too. I lived in a rent-stabilized apartment in New York City for five years in the 1980s. Wasn't fancy, but it was kept up, and it allowed me to get established in the area and get a start on my career. And going back farther in my life, my parents owned two small rental houses across the street from where I grew up in a small town. I worked mowing lawns, painting, and helping with cleanup and repairs when they were vacant. I do understand there are two sides to this issue, and I don't doubt that there are good and conscientious in caring landlords in Austin. And I don't doubt that there are others who are taking full advantage of our 3% vacancy rate. And, well, under ETPA, there are certain protections for the owners. There are provisions, reading I've done, for capital improvements, renovations, to maintain certain minimum or historical levels of return on a property. ETPA opponents want to scare me and other homeowners into thinking our property taxes are going to go up. That's not what the Columbia University study found. And when I look at some of our neighbors that have ETPA, Tarrytown, Sleepy Hollow, Pleasantville, and others, they seem to be doing just fine. In Austin, we now have a 3% vacancy rate in apartments that would fall under ETPA. And that creates an imbalance of power in favor of the owners. And I'm sure those good and conscientious owners treat their tenants fairly, and I'm sure there are others who abuse that power. ETPA is one thing we can do right now to give some of our neighbors in Austin more of a fair shake. It gives them greater stability and security in their lives, and it helps give me, as a homeowner, the kind of community that I want to live in. Thank you.
Okay, Nicole White.
Hello, members of the board. My name is Nicole White, resident at 822 Pines Bridge Road for four years. And tonight, I speak for an Austin renter that could not be here. Members of the village board, CVH Power, and fellow Austin residents, good evening. My name is Rodney A. Smith, and I am a nine-year resident in what I call my Austin. I reside in one of the buildings that could be protected under the ETPA. I am not present tonight, as my job as a limousine driver dictates otherwise. And a day or night of no work is a day or night of no pay, yet another fact faced by many. In conjunction with no medical coverage or very expensive out-of-pocket costs, I am confident that I can speak on behalf of many when I say that ETPA is sorely needed in our town. ETPA is needed in order to strengthen the whole community by providing stability for families to survive and provide for their children, their elderly parents, and themselves. Where I reside, on Charter Circle, we undergo an increase annually. Another drastic increase would force me out of the community I know and love. It would force me to move away from my son and grandchildren, who also live in Austin. Austin is strong when family members can live near each other and support one another. ETPA is an important way to help family and neighborly support networks to continue to thrive. We are all created equal, and there needs to be an equal opportunity to live securely and with peace of mind. ETPA will provide a needed level of stability so that all of us in Austin can meet our potential. I am asking that you vote in favor of ETPA tonight so that we can build a strong community that holds all its families dear. Thank you, and God bless.
Okay, Alex Baldotti.
Good evening. My name is Alex Baldotti. I just wanted to mention two items. One is, I guess, this Columbia study that's being kind of pushed. It was mentioned by a few of the speakers. I believe has no credibility as it was biased and commissioned by CVH, as well as, you know, paid-for study, vacancy study performed for the village that, you know, us taxpayers paid for. My name is Alex Baldotti. I'm a third-generation owner of rental properties here in the village. My brother and I work together, close hand in hand. We've owned and operated and built a lot of the housing in this community for three generations. We have an excellent reputation as a landlord, and I feel that many who have served, we have seen many village boards come and go over the years. I feel that the board has entangled itself in an issue that has no place in this village. It's very divisive. It's causing fractioning between landlords, owners, and tenants. And I feel that this is something that needs to be looked at very carefully, put on ice, and we need to keep the lines of communication open between us, the owners, and the property owners and the people of this village. It is manipulative. Manipulative to change by artful or unfair means to serve one's purpose. The vacancy study was manipulated to satisfy one purpose, enact rent control. It is flawed and misrepresentation of the true current market in our village. This action is a gross abuse of power. Eminent domain. Eminent domain is a legal strategy that allows federal or local government to seize private property for public use. The seizing authority must pay fair market value for the property seized. Enacting ETPA is the taking of personal property for government use. If this is enacted, we, the owners, expect to be compensated for our losses. ETPA, in its simplest form, is an unreasonable search and seizure of our property. We have always prided ourselves on fair and honest relationship that we have with our tenants. Going forward, this type of action would only create destructive and unbalanced relationship for the community and the landlords and the tenants. I strongly urge you to reconsider enacting rent control. This will forever change the community where we live going forward. Thank you, and good evening.
Thank you. Madam Clerk? Madam Clerk, how many names do you have left on the list? We've heard from 20 people so far, and I'm just wondering if it's...
Eleven.
Eleven left. Can we take like a, can we take like just a three-minute break and come back? Because I want to be able to be focused and listening, and I know that there's still at least a third of the people that have wanted to speak are going to speak on this. So, really, please, please don't get up and mill around too much and make a big noise, but just give us a couple of minutes' break.
I'm looking for somebody coming down the middle.
Thank you, everyone, for finding your seats.
Mary Gowardy. Trustees Bazemore Codman, Markin and Arar. Common Council Khan and Village Manager McDonald. Good evening. Thank you for having us to have this moment and speak to you regarding this really, really important issue. For those of you that don't know, I'm Reginald Reggie Bush, and I'm a fourth-generation Bush here in Austin. Back in 2007, I became the chairman of the board for Interfaith Council for Action. And, of course, for several years did that. But one of the things back in 2007 that we started was conversation with the village board and three past mayors about affordability and housing here in Austin. I also am a former member of the zoning board, the planning board, architectural review board, and I'm still class, and I will still be, after buried, president of Class of 1977 for Austin High School. Just did our 40 reunion last year. But anyway, I digress. So as you can see, I've been very involved with the Austin community all my life and care about its well-being and its fate. It's all about building a stronger community which certainly includes affordable housing and ETPA. It must. We must urge this board to adopt the ETPA program. We must not just ask, but we need to really urge, and I'll be remiss if I didn't say, because I wrote it, so I will say it, and demand, as citizens and taxpayers in this our community, this our community, we must ask and urge that it's done now. We must. It's not right, it's not right to focus on building high-end units of housing to support the people who can afford them. We must protect homes from people who, or protect homes for people, who call our grass, take care of our children, and do some of the other menial jobs here that help support this village. We must. We must engage our spouse, partner, siblings, cousins, neighbors, friends, acquaintances, strangers. I'm talking to all you out there now. To support this venture and this mission that is so necessary to the survival and healthy future of Austin. And I, once again, thank you for your time, and good night.
Thank you. Okay, Melvin Tansman.
Thank you. I thought I switched with that gentleman and was going to number 26. But my name's Mel Tansman. I'm the executive director of Westchester Disabled on the Move, which is an independent living center for people with disabilities. It's a non-residential center. I'm also a recently-appointed member of Westchester County's Housing Opportunities Commission. Tonight, I'm really here to speak on behalf of my constituency, which, for the last 35 years, have been people with disabilities and seniors on fixed incomes. We hear a lot about affordable housing. Affordable housing in some communities is 80% of the average median income. My constituents are below 30% of average median income. These are the people who will be hurt if ETPA is not passed. There is a national study called Priced Out. It's released every two years, and it shows the extent of the housing crisis for people with disabilities by looking at their average income and the average cost of a modest one-bedroom apartment. And it posits that a person on a fixed income would have to pay 175% of their income in Westchester County, one of the 10 most expensive locations in the country. So, obviously, Westchester Disabled on the Move, and I personally strongly support the passage and the adoption of the ETPA in the Village of Austin. I've heard some things tonight. We've heard about the imposition of the state rules on locality. Let's remember that it is not state-imposed. There are local rent control boards, which determine how much a fair increase will be. Those boards are made up of landlords, tenants, and neutral community members. So this is not being imposed. This is our community trying to decide what is a reasonable rent increase, okay? I want to also point out, and was mentioned by another speaker, that a secondary benefit to taking, for passing ETPA, is the senior citizen and person with disabilities rent increase exemption. This is not going to cost landlords anything more. It will allow people to stay independent in their communities because their rents will be frozen and landlords will be compensated. These are our most vulnerable citizens. These are the people also who bring diversity to our communities, the wisdom of our seniors, the adaptability of our people with disabilities who 30 years ago would be forced into institutions. I can't tell you how many of my consumers come to me saying, "If my landlord raises my rent, I'm going to be homeless, and being homeless for me is going to be sending me to a nursing home." That is just not acceptable, and I know that the Village of Austin cares more about its residents, all of its residents, including those on fixed incomes and those who are working people and only making maybe minimum wage. Really, landlords, you know, we heard about special interest groups by a landlord today, and I'm sorry. I think a landlord is a special interest group. And I want to remind everybody that a diverse community is a very vibrant community. Thank you.
Thank you. Elliot Skler.
Good evening. My name is Elliot Sklar, actually. I'm the Columbia professor that everybody has been talking about. I want to defend myself. No, all I want to do is explain what this study was and why it was done. I'm a professor at Columbia, actually at Columbia University, but I direct the Center for Sustainable Urban Development in the Earth Institute at Columbia, and we work on urban problems around the world. I'm writing a new textbook on zoning now, and I deal with issues of local finance. But what happened was, Community Voices Heard came to me, and they were told, they had heard that ETPA was going to wreck, property taxes would go up, property values would fall. And they asked me about it, and I looked at Westchester. I'm also a Westchester resident, and I complained about my taxes as well as the next person. and I complained about my taxes as well as the next person. I'm a homeowner. So I realized, oh my gosh, what we have here is what we call a natural experiment. We have communities in Westchester that have ETPA. We have other communities that don't have it at all. The question becomes, has it made a difference? So it's been around since '74, but I took a, need to take a period. So I took the 20, I took the 15 years from 2002 to 217. Why did I choose those years? Because that 17 is the latest data, but 2002 to 217 was a period in which we had a real estate boom, a real estate bust, and things were going back up again. If ETPA was causing something distinctly different to happen in the communities that had it from the communities that didn't have it, it should show up in things like assessed values, it should show up in equalized values, it would show up in tax rates. So we ran the data, and we took the Westchester County data, we ran it every which way for those 15 years to see if we could find a difference, and we found no statistical difference in the communities that had it and didn't have it. Ironically, we did, on one test, we did find a statistically significant difference. In using the 217 mean equalized property values for the communities, which adjust for, you know, assessed values for sales prices, actually, ETPA communities had statistically significantly higher mean values than the non-ETPA communities. Why, I don't know. But the bigger point is, the reason you don't find a difference is because we're not talking about what the first speaker tonight talked about, rent control, we're talking about rent stabilization, which means that what gets taken into account are things like property tax increases, are things like fuel costs, are things like maintenance, and essentially what it does, it evens it out. It doesn't, in other, it has to be concerned about the landlord's return on their investment and their property, and it is, it is an expedient. All the other things that the mayor talked about need to be done, they do need to be done. We do need more affordable housing, but as the last speaker said, affordable housing has to do with the mean, with mean income, with median incomes and some proportion of median incomes. We do have a housing crisis, and I only got in just to answer a simple question. Did it seem to make a difference? And this was real, this is real data. This was, this isn't speculation. This is the actual data for Westchester County, where this would be happening, and I couldn't find any difference in between those communities. So you've had a long evening, and I thank you for your forbearance.
Okay, Marcelo Hippolyte?
Hi, good evening. I've been a resident of Austin for 40 years. I've seen many phases of Austin, and I could tell you that what I've seen recently in the downtown area, I like. And that begs the question as to why Austin wants to get into the rental business. If you do adopt ETPA, it's going to force revaluation of the properties, it's going to force those taxes onto homeowners, and I'll ask you, as a landlord and a homeowner, where's the relief for the homeowner? If I am a homeowner, senior citizen on a fixed income, right, are you going to cap my taxes because I can't afford it? I don't think so. So it's hard for me to stand here and say, hey, how is this just? It's not. And people speak about helping the Austin residents. Well, homeowners are Austin residents too, not just the tenants. Again, I have properties that I've rented for many, many years, comes from my family. This ETPA is not going to affect my properties, but I could tell you that I have tenants that are there 10, 12 years. I don't increase the rent every year. They're great tenants, great families, they pay on time, they take care of the property. And that's what I feel a lot of landlords in Austin do. We've-
We said a lot, not all.
A lot of Austin landlords do that. You've heard folks that come up here that have 100-plus units that are saying that, hey, we are below market value for those reasons. These properties need attention, and if now you're going to cap the amount of income that I can produce for those properties, how am I going to address those issues? Things cost money. You call the tree guy, and it's a couple of thousands just to take a tree, if he comes. So I urge the village to really consider working with the landlords, working with the tenants, come up with a solution. But adopting and having the state run our apartments, I don't think is the right solution. What the board needs to do is really focus their attention on bringing businesses to town, right? We're only going to flourish if we have businesses to offer services. We want tenants, tenants to stay. We have a lot of vacant storefronts. So let's focus the attention on the storefronts, on the mom-and-pop coffee shop that's doing very well on Main Street, on more restaurants. Bring them into town, and you'll have more people, that will create more revenue for the village, that will help all of us, tenants, landlords, homeowners, school district, library, everyone. So it's not, let's take it from Peter to pay Paul, let's find a solution for all of us to do well. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Okay, Joe Perillo?
Good evening, board, and for the record, it's John. Takes a lot to get me out here. I haven't seen anybody in a long time, but let me give you a little history. I'm a resident of Austin for 67 years. I'm born in Austin. I have a business in Austin since 1967. Austin has always taken the leadership in providing low-income or affordable housing. I go back in time, I was involved with the approval of Claremont Gardens at that time, a Snowden house at that time, Maple House for senior citizens. And since then, I believe that the board, I don't know which board, has issued a resolution that new construction over certain units have a certain percentage of affordable housing. But I'm here for the long term, and I understand the consideration of these people. Just for the record, two of the places that I lived as a boy was 74 Broadway, a six-family Coldwater flat, and 24 Croton Street, a similar place. So I understand their concerns and their complaints. As my tenure as mayor, this also came up, and it's a tough decision. And what I did, and I suggest maybe the board would want to do this, is I summoned all of the property owners that have large complexes in the village of Austin and had a strong and firm conversation with them about the concerns of the community. And at that point, we developed a landlord-tenants committee, and I thought it worked fairly well. Now compromise to me is when all parties walk away unhappy, because if somebody walks away unhappy, they got over. So this decision is not something that you just say, all in favor, aye, all in favor, nay. You have large tracts of land in Austin that could be potential development, such as Marion Dale. Now, that's owned by a religious organization. Some people say, well, they'll never sell. That's not true. Eagle Bay and Mystic Point was owned by religious organizations. I think you need to get people together, like Ginsburg Development, and ask them, would they have built Harbor Square under the ETPA? I think you need a roundtable of developers to ask what their concerns are if ETPA, because revenue, it takes revenue to run a community. You know, I understand the tax burden. You know, I supply affordable housing, but because I don't have a law that dictates me. I'll give you an example. My three-bedroom apartments go for $1,400 a month, okay? I haven't raised taxes and rents in probably seven years, and I hear from my wife every day, okay? But that eventually will have to change. Now, there are landlords that gouge, but the majority of the people that I know that own property do not, okay? So with that said, you know, substandard housing was talked about. Well, you have the tools and the equipment, it's called a building department to deal with that. You know, Doylestown, Pennsylvania has a law you may want to check into that re-renting has to be inspected by the building department to make sure everything's in order. So I don't know the specifics of that law, but that's something you may want to entertain. We talk about, you talked about affordability, that's a two-way conversation. People here should address the school board-
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Perillo.
Good evening, folks. Good evening, board. Thank you for your service to the community. We appreciate it. Good evening, everyone. My name is Stephen Dewey, Austin, New York. I've heard a lot of studies, a lot of people talking, a lot of people from outside the community, inside the community, that's great. Now, one has stated that they stand right there every Thursday, right there every Thursday, protecting tenants, which I get the honor to do often. When I guardian at Lightem, I've represented tenants, I've represented landlords too. Let me take you through a scenario, one of my older tenants, that would happen today. Now, correctly stated, so people understand, ETPA, there is a rent control guidelines board, we had some people talk from that board here tonight, and as I recall, I believe our most recent increase has now been passed at 2%, so a 2% increase in the rent. Two-year lease would be a 3% increase, I believe, if I'm not mistaken. But let's just use those guidelines. I think a couple of years ago, it was only half percent, whatever. Recent studies here in Westchester County show the affordability of housing in the housing market has a difference between affordability and ETPA, and I've heard everyone intermingle this tonight, and they're incorrect. Affordability has nothing to do with ETPA. But take this scenario, and first of all, in this study, of all of our communities, Austin rates fifth best with rents that are $1,500 or less. I think we're 53%. There's only five other communities ahead of us, and only one of those, as I recall, Sleepy Hollow enacted ETPA. Austin, contrapositively, is the fifth worst for rents that are $1,600 and over, and all the remaining 17 communities with ETPA fall within that guideline. So ETPA doesn't protect you from the cost of the rent or the affordability, it's simply a federal law that has been passed 40-something years ago and hasn't been passed in this area in, what, the last 20 years or something? So it makes no sense. But let's take this scenario here. I've got a widow, I've got a mother of three, I got a vet, $1,500, let's go with the average. And that's basically what we get here in Austin, believe it or not, best rents throughout Westchester. You take that 2% that the guidelines board just passed, 30 bucks. Come on, what's 30 bucks? Well, I got a grandmother who's going to go down to CVS, and they're either going to pay $10 more for their prescription, or they're not going to, or they're going to pay 30 bucks for the rent. Which is it? I got a mother of three. What did she just do this week? I got money for the school books, I got the pens, I got the kids getting off to school, I got lunches. 30 bucks is, can be an affordability problem for them. But what do I do? I call a landlord. I said, look, we got the new lease coming up, can we hold off? I heard a gentleman, two landlords say they'll work with their landlords and not raise the rent. I'm a witness to that. I'm one of those guys that calls up and asks, can we hold off on $10 this year for a whole year? Next year, we'll go to 15. We work that out. Now, what hasn't been mentioned here, and what I'm upset about, is that we have now a landlord-tenant relations council. This board is going to be presented with our first report. It's been revisited, revived, and over the 16 cases that we just had, not one person, not one tenant came in complaining about rent gouging or what have you. I know some folks have mentioned, oh, there's protections, ETPA's got protections. There are protections in the law. I stand here and I protect my tenants every day. You want a rent gouge? I'm coming at you. I'll get trouble damages from you. You want to damage the apartment? There's going to be protections on that. You don't want to fix the apartment? I'm going to get a rent abatement. I've got all the protections in the world, I don't want the federal government coming in telling my tenants what they get. I don't want, which none of them, no one has told them. You've told them? You got a problem? You're going out to Queens. There's no office here. You're going out to Queens. You have a problem in Austin right now? You got the landlord-tenant relations council right in front of you, right here on 16 Croton. Utilize them. I ask this board to withhold on their vote a second. Let's utilize, wait for our report that we come to you next week. We can always revisit this again, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Robert McCrainer?
Good evening. My name's Rob McCrainer. I'm an attorney. I serve as the legal director of the Worker Justice Center of New York. We provide free legal assistance to low-income New Yorkers. We're a nonprofit public interest law practice, and we assist households, including households here in Austin. So I've represented hundreds of tenants in eviction proceedings and legal actions to address substandard housing conditions, and I just want to share with you from my perspective what I think are some relevant considerations here. It's true that rent stabilization, ETPA, is not a complete affordable housing policy, but contrary to what the previous speaker suggested, it is absolutely critical to preventing displacement. I've represented tenants in jurisdictions that have rent stabilization and in jurisdictions that don't. What I can tell you is this, in Austin right now, right, the only statutes that provide any protections to tenants really would be those that give procedural rights to tenants, the right to a notice before you can be evicted. There's a prohibition on self-help evictions, right, by landlords. So you've got to give tenant a notice. The tenant has a right to appear in court and to answer the complaint, but a landlord's not required to provide any basis to obtain a warrant of eviction, right? Doesn't have to give a reason under the current law, right? You can say, I'm terminating your tenancy, and as long as I've followed the procedure, the process, as the landlord, I can do that, right? The only law that will change that, right, is ETPA. The other policies that we've talked about, good policies, right, to think about incentivizing the creation of additional affordable housing, wonderful, great, but none of those policies, right, would change that. And what that means is for the folks that live in units that are here tonight, right, that would be subject to ETPA, right, there is no protection to prevent them from being displaced if this action isn't taken tonight by the board. What we know, what we've heard, is that people that were here the last time this was considered, they've been evicted. That's going to happen to people that are here tonight, right, unless this law is adopted. It's not a perfect law. It doesn't solve the affordable housing crisis, but it will solve this issue of the risk of displacement to tenants that are living in units that would be covered by the law. That's the reality. Just, you know, and that, I mean, that is why tenants and tenant advocates and tenants' attorneys have struggled so hard to win rent stabilization in New York City and the 19 Westchester municipalities and in other counties, and to keep it, right? Because it actually matters, right? It's not something that's irrelevant, it's a real, it's a real protection. The other point I just want to say is on the treatment of landlords, right? So we've already, I think we had great information tonight from someone who served on the Westchester Rent Guidelines Board to dispel this notion that owners of rent-stabilized properties in Westchester are impoverished, right? That is just not true, right? That is not consistent with the facts. And the reason is that rent stabilization provides multiple mechanisms for a landlord to increase the rent when it's justified. So you get the rent guidelines board increase, you get a vacancy increase of 20% when the unit becomes vacant. On top of that, you can get a longevity increase, and you can get increases for major capital improvements, right? Landlords are really good at using those mechanisms to increase the revenues from their properties. I'm sure they will do that here in Westchester as well. And that's why this idea that no one will invest money in rent-regulated properties, we know that that's not true, right? We read every day, in fact, the person who's here from the Fifth Avenue Committee talked, the concern is actually the opposite. Look at the real estate market, look at what investors are paying to buy rent-regulated properties now, right, in Westchester and in New York City. It's just not true that people won't invest in rent-regulated properties. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Dick Garrity, trustees, and everyone else. Hi, my name is Sheila Verine Massengel, and I am a member and leader with Community Voices Heard Power and a registered voter in Austin. And another thing, we are tired of hearing rumors about CVH being outsiders. And another thing, we are tired of hearing rumors about CVH being outsiders. I am CVH, and I am a resident of Austin. And so are the 500 people who sign our petition, which I will give you tonight. In all fairness, residents in this community and all across the state shouldn't have to worry if they have a place to call home tomorrow. Children should not have to worry if they have a home to come to after school is out. And no resident should be afraid to speak out about anything in their home. I know, because I experienced what it's like to speak out while living in a building not protected by ETPA. My former landlord targeted my family and I because of my advocacy for ETPA. He first refused to renew my lease and admitted to the mayor that he was trying to get rid of me because I was fighting for ETPA. Ultimately, I lost my housing because how vulnerable I was in the absence of ETPA, which entitles tenants to a renewed lease. The longer this situation goes on, the more tenants will be put out of their homes. Residents are losing their homes right now. Landlords think that they can make more money on tenants with higher incomes, or they want to get rid of tenants who speak up for themselves. We know that we are on the right side of history. The bottom line for landlords is money. Our values are different. We represent the community who are neglected in the race towards profit. We are clear that the landlords will survive, but some of our families will not. That's why there's no more time to delay. The Privilege have come up with studies that call for even more studies before ETPA can be considered. But these studies did not consult us, the tenants, who are in pain. The time for endless studies are over. We must pass ETPA. Thank you.
Good evening, all. My name is Tamara Stewart, and I reside at 30 Park Avenue in Mount Vernon. While I'm not an Austin resident, I enjoyed the six years that I served this community while working at the Austin Public Library. Austin is a gem of a community, vibrant, diverse, and unpretentious. I am here this evening to urge you to adopt the Emergency Tenant Protection Act for Austin. For me and my neighbors at Westchester Plaza in Mount Vernon, ETPA has been instrumental in restoring our forebuilding community to a place we can be proud to call home. Over the past several years, our tenant coalition has succeeded in getting the owner of our complex to make many long-overdue building-wide repairs and improvements. We have new roofs, elevators, mailboxes, carpeting and lighting, and our parking garage and two outdoor parking lots have been substantially rehabilitated. In addition, we are excitedly awaiting the unveiling of our new backyard green space, which will restore access to the complex's largest community space back to tenants after two decades of neglect and deterioration. Had it not been for ETPA, Westchester Plaza tenants would still be enduring the deplorable conditions that had become the sad and shameful norm. While ETPA is definitely a boon to tenants, owners benefit, too. Building owners who make major capital improvements are eligible to apply for rent increases to recoup their investments and even make a profit. We have quite a few new neighbors in the complex who decided to move to Westchester Plaza because of its enhanced appearance and renovated apartments. Adopting ETPA is a win-win for tenants and owners. ETPA will benefit the Austin community as a whole by helping this vibrant, diverse community to remain so. While adopting ETPA won't solve all of Austin's housing problems, it can definitely help. Please, pass ETPA in Austin. Thank you.
About 400 or so signatures closed, closed in ETPA, and copies of the Affordable Housing Study from Steve Dewey. My name is John Van Steen. I live at 78 South Highland Avenue. I was stunned. I had no sooner published this latest study that Steve mentioned and this being passed out to you, Affordable Housing in Austin 2018, which shows Austin is one of the most affordable communities in Westchester, when there was a response from a Community Voices Heard proponent, ETPA was never meant to be the solution to affordable housing. Seems some people are very confused about the difference between ETPA and affordable housing. I was stunned and responded, "The entire justification of the village board promoting ETPA and disregarding the advice of the housing consultants that have been before them is to promote and create affordable housing in Austin." Well, who is Community Voices Heard? We hear a lot about the big real estate lobby, but we hear very little about Community Voices Heard. Their Form 990 shows them as a $1.5 million operation with a million-dollar payroll, a number of employees here in Austin, and $350,000 going toward, per year, going toward promotional activities. These are all figures that are taken from the financial forms of Community Voices Heard in 2016, their IRS Form 990. On their website, their strategies are to create, develop, participate, and win. They develop community leaders who then participate in the policymaking process and win, but for whom? What's their action plan? With their well-financed organization, they're able to target communities that may be in the midst of some local political turnover. They hover around those new to the political process or around a person trying to oust an incumbent. They offer to potential allies exposure, press releases, and organizational capabilities that are generally well beyond the reach and financial ability of entry-level politicians. And with this alliance, they're able to gain a foothold in a community, and the next objective is control of the local board. But what is, but what is CVH actually telling, telling their people? Is CVH telling their supporters that if ETPA is passed, the oldest and presumably most affordable market-rate apartments will be removed from the market and not available to them? Are they telling their supporters that ETPA provides no affordable housing spaces of any kind? Are they telling their supporters that ETPA provides no new affordable housing spaces? Are they telling their followers that according to ACS data, Austin currently has more space available than any Westchester community with ETPA? Are they telling their followers that according to ACS data, Austin rents are already affordable compared to most communities in Westchester, especially with ETPA? Are they telling their followers that unless they are already in one of the units designated for ETPA, that they will have no benefit from the program? Are they telling their supporters that any grievance that they may have with a landlord would not be adjudicated locally by the landlord-tenant relations board, but by a board in Queens like 25 State Street? Are they telling their followers that once ETPA is enacted, availability of affordable rental spaces declines? You as a village board once again have put yourselves in a difficult position. You want to do the right thing for the community, and in your hearts, you want to be able to help people that have affordable housing needs. You've had a litany of professionals come before you to give you good ideas on good constructive ways to work on affordable housing in Austin. They have said that ETPA is the last thing that you should try. Listen to the professionals that have given you good advice. Thank you.
Tim Collins.
Thank you. Thank you to the board, to the mayor, and to all of those who showed up here tonight. For seven years, I served as the executive director of the New York City Rent Guidelines Board. I've been in practice as a tenant attorney in New York for over 30 years. I've testified in Toronto, and Chicago, and Seattle about rent regulation. I've written Law Review article on rent stabilization in New York and its effects, and I spent seven years overseeing a research staff that did nothing but look at rent stabilization and its effects. I am an expert on rent regulation, and you should pass the ETPA. You have, putting aside the economists who address abstract questions about the effects of a rent ceiling, not looking at the actual workings of housing markets and actual laws governing rent regulation. A lot of those studies are highly misleading, and they have been addressed by other economists who say, "Look, look at the laws, look at what they allow, and you'll find that these are not simply rent ceilings." You have the longest experience in rent regulation in American history within 20 miles of here in the city of New York. New York's two largest housing booms occurred in the 1920s and from 1945, excuse me, 1947 until 1966, both times when strict rent controls were in effect. With regard to maintenance, New York City has a housing and vacancy survey that takes place every three years. It is a detailed survey about many things, including incomes and also conditions in housing. After some, over 40 years of these surveys, the New York City housing stock, its stabilized stock, has never been in better shape. When rent stabilization was passed in New York City, the average owner spent 62 cents of every rent dollar collected on maintenance costs. Today, the average owner spends 58 cents of each rent dollar on maintenance costs. Their profits have never been better. It is, it was, during the course of the recession, the worst economic downturn since the Great Depression, the best investment anybody could make in the country other than precious metals. They got steady and increasing incomes throughout the whole time. Their net operating incomes have gone up something like over 50% in the last 20 years. Maintenance, as I said, is good. You have great incentives to improve the housing stock. Major capital improvement increases are a profit center for owners of rent-stabilized housing. They fight to do those improvements, and sometimes they have to fight with tenants over those improvements because they know they'll get large increases. That's why New York is highly efficient in terms of things like new boilers, thermopane windows, and so on. The system directs owners into making those investments. It doesn't raise taxes. It's common sense that this, the village is going to control its tax base and its tax bills. Does it shift taxes? Possibly, possibly. It may be that because rents are not going to go up as fast in ETPA-covered buildings, that you'll have to look elsewhere for revenues. But think about what you're doing by leaving the status quo. When those rents go up for those relatively low-income housings, and the CCC report says it's between $30,000 and $50,000 in those households, who is paying those property taxes? It's not the landlord, it's the tenants. They're going to pass it on to the tenants. So the lowest-income people in this village are going to be paying an increased burden in property taxes if you don't adopt the ETPA. I understand the position of homeowners, but homeowners, by and large, are more affluent than the people who are living in these units. The mayor mentioned the concern about anticipated rents. Most rent regulation statutes occur by looking back at a certain point in time in order to capture those anticipated increases. I will just close with this. Any one of the landlord advocates who is here that wants to debate me on the specifics of any aspect of ETPA is welcome at any time. I'll meet here at 3 o'clock in the morning.
DeNora Rexis.
The Dividend Authorities of Austin, here to represent my neighbor, DeNora Rexis. She put on her nails. I'm a voter, a taxpayer, a mother, and I live in one of the six-unit buildings that could be protected by Emergency Tenant Protection Act. My family and I lived in Austin for four years. We love this community. My two daughters attend the Austin Public School. My husband and I fear there will be pushouts of the community that we call home. We live on a month-to-month leases in my building, leaving us vulnerable to getting kicked out for the landlords. In the past three years, the rent has gone up about 200, sometimes 101 punch. I can tell when the landlord is about to write, to increase the rent because he starts to make little cheap fixes around the property. He has recently started to do some, some of that again, and I'm afraid yet another large rent increase. These increases are the lack of rotation from eviction for already, that already pushed out several of my good neighbors. My husband and I work hard. I'm a home health aide, caring for elderly. He works for a caring company. But while the rent grows increasingly higher, our income do not. We fear that we may be the next to be pushed out. The Emergency Tenant Protection Act will protect, provide us with a peace of mind that our families and all over 1,200 other families will have a one- or two-year lease, and our rent increases will be reasonable. It will provide us with a peace of mind that we make a complaint about the lack of heat in the winter, during the winter, and we won't be labeled as a bad tenant, and we have a lease terminated. In our fight for emergency tenant protection, we seek to unite the community around to share, as a shared value, the value of stability, dignity, safety for all residents in our village. ETPA is a way that can strengthen Austin by leaving up the values that we hold dear. We are clear that we are known as a powerful, as the billionaire real estate lobby. We are against, but we have faith that this board will do the right thing. We have faith that we put people over politics. We have faith that you will listen to our cry for action, that you will pass the Emergency Tenant Protection Act tonight. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Alberta Walker. I'm a member of Community Voices Heard Power, and I am a tenant in one of the buildings that would protect, would be protected under the Emergency Tenant Protection Act. I moved back to Austin a little over a year ago, and I say moved back because I grew up in Austin. So I'm just returning home. My family has lived in Austin for three generations, and they still live here today. As a resident of Austin, I'm a taxpayer and a registered voter. I come to you tonight in great support of the Emergency Tenant Protection Act. As a senior citizen and being on a fixed income, ETPA will make it possible for me to have a stable and secure place to call home. Austin offers very limited housing options for people like me. That is, that is paying approximately a third of my income in rent. If my rent were to increase much higher than it is now, I would be forced to leave Austin, the community that I love. We need to preserve affordable housing for those of us who have made our homes here, for those who have children that attend the Austin school system and have all their friends here. There's no time to waste in making this decision, as families are being evicted and displaced as we speak. Estates are high for us, so I ask that you would please focus on people tonight and not on politics, and vote yes on the Emergency Tenant Protection Act. Please preserve a place for us in this community. Thank you.
this evening with the homeowners not being present here as much as I would have liked. A little story here. I was in the same room about a month or so ago here because my daughter got a stop-sign ticket waiting for the traffic court, and I went through two hours of tenant landlord court with the judge sitting where the mayor is sitting right now. What struck me about that was, it was sort of like, you know, QVC, let's make a deal, easy pay. I didn't see one person who was behind on their rent for many, many months, and some of them beyond even that. They were all offered deals, let's say, you know, pay $200 next week, $300 a couple weeks later, things of that sort. None of them were evicted. And, you know, that tells me something. It tells me that people here are treated fairly by the current system. There is no need for ETPA. I think that costs will ultimately be passed on in my tax bill as a homeowner. You know, there's no such thing as a free lunch. If people are not paying their taxes, assessments go down. The bottom line is that people have to pay. And who's going to pay that? People that own homes. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak this evening? No, I'm sorry, sir. Just one time, just one time.
Okay, I finished.
Is there anybody else who would like to speak tonight? All right, thank you. If you did speak and you would like to, and you did not submit your comments in writing, but you would like to, please do, submit them to the clerk. So then we need to have a motion to either... Oh. Absolutely. Would anybody else like on the board to like to comment at this time?
First of all, I want to thank everybody for coming here. In the age of technology, for those 80 to 100 people who are here, and the 400 people who've sent us letters, and 400, 500 on the one side or another, so a lot of people that are interested in this. I didn't come with prepared notes. I probably should have. I had a very crazy day at work today, and so I realize that that was a blessing because it gave me the opportunity to actually listen during a hearing rather than come with an opinion about everything. So I wrote down a bunch of words that made a lot of sense to me. I just would like to address some of them. What seems to be happening here, that this has become a politicized issue by interest groups and members of our board using ETPA as a political stand. It's, for me, unfortunate, but it's a great opportunity for discussion. So this is not, for me, about landlords versus tenants. Somehow, it's become that conversation, probably because you put two groups on opposite sides of the other and force people to take a side. Frankly, shame on all of us, because that's not how communities should work. So I'm going to speak. If you interrupt, that's okay. I'll just keep talking over your voices. I've sat here, I've listened. I was elected to represent the entire community. The community that, in my opinion, is represented well here are tenants. Communities by, I stopped counting after 10, tenant advocacy groups had their time to speak from not only Austin, but outside of Austin and inside of Austin. Homeowners tend to not have advocacy groups. Homeowners don't tend to have people who speak on their behalf because they're individuals living in the community, but technically, the people sitting on this board are supposed to represent the entire community. So let's talk about people. A bunch of people mentioned, including the Reverend, started me thinking about, let's talk about people. So let's do that. A lot of the signs that you have here, housing is a human right, stable homes, I think that's the same thing. You know, it applies to the homeowners in this community. And for those of you that come from New York City with your great expertise, let me tell you that had you read the one empirical study that was done for the village, not by interest groups, not by lobby groups, not by advocacy groups, not by lawyers who do this for a living, and lawyers who don't do this for a living, from an empirical study that was recommended by the board that sat here a year ago, which was four people minus Omar Herrera, who was not on the board at that time, that went through a lot of trouble and $2,000 to get an empirical study, was clear that this community, that homeowners are not rich people, as they might be in New York City, that they are actually very similar in makeup to renters across the board, maybe not exact, but very close. So that's an empirical study. You don't like that answer, and you want to throw it out? That's on you. Me, I like looking at the data. I could dig holes in all of the studies that were done that are not empirical. For me, that was the one the village got. And frankly, part of that study was a sequential analysis of how affordable housing can be brought to bear. ETPA is the last of that series. Some of my colleagues believe that it's up to them to take an empirical study and pick and choose what they want to do. That's fine with them. It's not okay with me. I think that when you hire a professional in the field who's recognized, who I think is recognized throughout New York State, you don't get to pick and choose the sequence that he was very clear in a public meeting that we should follow. I think that is the study that we should follow because it's singularly one of the empirical studies. What also came out of that study is that homeowners will bear the cost of anything that we do. And the reason is that unlike the city, unlike other cities like Mount Vernon, New Rochelle, White Plains, and a whole bunch of, and including Tarrytown, by the way, where corporate taxes pay a big part of the base, which they can afford to do, and communities like the ones I just mentioned, which while talk about affordable housing, half of the past number of years, 20 years, have been building really high-rent buildings and condos and get their taxation from a wider group of people. This community, unlike those communities, is built almost primarily of homeowners, renters, co-op, and condo owners, who are all going to be affected. But the only group that somehow sees fit to be subsidized are tenants of very specific buildings, not all tenants, by the way, certain tenants, not tenants based on income, just those that happen to be living in certain buildings. And I'm here to tell you, as a trustee who was elected for the service of the entire community, not targeted groups, not for political reasons, but the entire community, it is unfair to make a group of people, other renters, homeowners who are barely surviving, by the way, this is not a rich community, co-op owners and condos, this is all in studies, not my opinion. Okay, these are not hard facts to find. It is unfair to shift the burden of that cost. I won't bother to tell you my disgust with the federal government's shifting of a burden of taxation on homeowners that hit hard this year for this community, but you all that live in this community, not the people that came in recently, but you all that live here, know that many of our homeowners are also people that are struggling to make sense of how to support themselves. And all of these things that you want for tenants, exactly those signs, speak to me of exactly the congregants that go to the churches and all of the members of our community. I think it is unfair to shift that cost not only one time, but every single year. As for the amount of time we've spent on ETPA, honestly, it's been years. ETPA was being discussed in the 1980s. Virtually every board that has looked at it did not want to bring it to the foreground because, as elected officials who represent the entire community, they actually didn't see it as a fair piece of legislation. We're not the only board, we're the only board that have brought it this far along because I think it's worth looking at. Personal journey for me is that when I started on this, I thought it looked great. I thought it would produce affordable housing. It doesn't produce one new element of affordable housing to people who are coming into this community or people that live here. It stabilizes for those people that live in those particular units, but it shifts the cost of those units. And the concept that, you know, the buildings will be worth more or less, you know, frankly, not even thinking about that from my perspective as an elected official for the community. Whether a landlord makes more money or less money, I may represent him, but honestly, that's not what's been my focus. My focus is what is happening to half of the population, this community, who will bear the burden year after year of having to make up for the increased cost of police, the increased cost of cost of living, that rental number that's used both in New York City, which, by the way, is being debated up and down, is not even matching the cost of living increase. Okay? It is not a reasonable rate, and for me, as a representative for the entire community, and by the way, including co-op and condo owners, everyone will have to subsidize this stabilization. Do I think that this is the right answer at this point in time? I can't support it. I think it's unconscionable for an elected official to support it. I don't think it's a fair, reasonable attempt to pass costs to other tenants. I don't think it's fair to do this to people who own homes and condos and co-ops. I won't discuss the study. I think you've all gone through that. New York City is actually taking down all of these rent stabilization elements. I don't know why we would actually use them as an example, given what's been in the news all summer long about the Housing Department in New York City.
Excuse me?
The vacancy rate was about 3.6%. Whether you think the study was legitimate, not legitimate, it doesn't matter. I think that it's probably relatively accurate. It is also accurate that that number is exactly the same number that New York City sees after 40 years of having the same laws about rent stabilization, rent control in place. So they're not better off or less better off. And for Westchester County, one of the things that really spoke to me about the people that live in this community, unlike other communities, is that most of our taxes are paid for by homeowners, condos, co-ops, small businesses. We don't have the large corporations here. We don't have a lot of the ways to collect taxes, and somebody will have to pay for all the increases. And if it's not evenly distributed, I think it's amazingly unfair to the community at large. For me, that is why I actually cannot support the passing of ETPA of, it's not the first time for some of you who've been here have heard it. It is, I believe, the best deal for the people of this community, all of the people, not a targeted group, is not fair to the community that we live in, which is, by every empirical study done, a working-class community. So I thank you for listening to me, and I appreciate my ability and my time with you to also listen to you. Some of you I've heard before, but I am happy to hear some of the new voices that also came into the room tonight.
trustee Herrera, did you want to speak?
Sure. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for taking the time to be here tonight, 10:26. Thanks for bearing with us, everyone. So, you know, this has been a long-going process even before I started the board in 2014 and then came back. And I do have to clarify some items and refresh your memory on decisions that have taken on this pulpit the past four to five years regarding ETPA, because they have been decisions. There's a reason why we're here for the second time again, and why you had to pay for it again. Okay? So in 2016, I remember because I was called from Albany, I took some time off to go to the public hearing, when ETPA first came to the board for discussion, and I was pretty appalled to finally, I knew that these residents existed and these property owners existed, but I didn't actually see them face to face. So what I mean by that is that when I listened to everyone speaking, those people, they, I was like, oh, wow, this is not about ETPA. It was clearly about a separate issue. And that was right, even before I came on the board. And the fact that it was never brought up to a vote, that's unacceptable. You, as the public, pro or against, followed the process, funded a study, brought it to a public hearing, and then, oh, it's being tabled. How convenient. So moving forward, I think what's important to know is that stability can't wait. And what you've heard is that when I was asked about ETPA, there was a big push yesterday, I don't know by whom, for people to come to my home, email me, text me, et cetera, to change Omar's mind on possibly considering ETPA. And the big difference was, and I agree, Omar, you think that people have the right to stay here, and we don't, that if you can't afford to stay here, you got to go. And that's where I just say I disagree. And as an elected official, it's my role to make sure that the current people that elected me are able to stay in the community they're currently in. Yes, we need more businesses, and I want to commend, there are people in this room that have invested time, money, and energy to make the downtown what it is today, and I thank them for that. And they're going to continue to be part of our progress, but as new businesses come, as new services come, you leave. You're not able to stay and enjoy the new that's coming here because you can't afford to be here. Okay? So I need to redirect my priorities as to, am I, I understand the notion and the need to attract visitors, to attract the people from Brooklyn or wherever else in the state or country you're coming from, right? Because we want a mix of families and income brackets and businesses, but it's, my main priority is to serve the people that live here now, and the people that are going to grow up here. Okay? That's just my philosophy. I cannot speak for the board. The rhetoric. So we've heard that rhetoric has been done on both sides. The CDH outsiders, dunk dunk dunk, and the property owners or homeowners, or however people want to say it. Special interest groups are the Building and Realty Institute of Westchester County, and also the DDR Public Relations Inc. firm, that you've been reading stuff throughout the, you know, and nothing towards these companies. They do great advocacy work for their companies. That's why people pay dues, and they're part of memberships, and, but they're special interest groups. To me, and again, I'll speak for me, I don't view, and CDH, it's a compliment that they called you a millionaire agency. Because, because I just know how nonprofits work when it comes to advocacy world, so the fact that you guys invested money in a community where we have not been successful at mobilizing the people that are most at need. You came here and mobilized people and trained our residents to finally stand up and lobby for themselves, something that unfortunately, I've been part of a group that has not been doing that for you. Okay? So if anything, if anything, I want more experienced and mobilized and resourceful groups to help the village get out of the many issues that we seem not to see or address or discuss for years to come. New York State HCR, by the way, has an office in White Plains, and they have also offered to set up an office in Austin to help with the implementation that will come with the registration and the follow-up. And as you learned today, what you didn't read on your postcard at the train station are the many services and programs that, yes, you got to go through if you qualify when it comes to hardships and development, and the many other ones, which, by the way, you could actually print out a fact sheet on their website and actually goes through it. The notion that there's no need for this, I can't speak for my old boss, but I work state-level, county-level, the amount of letters that I wrote specifically for Austin advocating or kind of addressing tenant-related needs that surpassed the village, or that for whatever reason at that time were not being handled by the village, or maybe even, it never got to the village, it just came to us. There were a lot. There were a lot. And it's not, you know, oh, I want, you know, a new appliance, and he said, no. Those, I understand, can be, you know, no, they were, hey, you know, water keeps falling in my roof, and he wants to evict me, and, you know. Other ones were... Other ones were, you know, you could imagine. I don't have to go into, you know, into scenarios. Then we also had a couple of calls from landlords who had tenants that also were out of line. So I'm not saying that all landlords and tenants are the ideal people you would want. However, to say that we can keep on making Osning for you, yet we can't guarantee you staying here, or at least try to help you maintain your ability to stay here, to me, is just wrong. And unfortunately, I grew up here, grew up on the streets, and literally, I know that I know that I know that I know that there are different parts of Osning. Okay? We can't say we're united until we realize what divides us. Okay? And there's a lot that does currently in Osning that requires healing, as we heard earlier. But it also requires acceptance and clarification and embracement that not everyone feels like they have a seat at the table, even though we say they do. Okay? This whole conversation, even if you listen to even, at times, both sides, has been beyond ETPA. So, you know, today, one of the management firms tried to get a restraining order on me to not come to the meeting. And I'm sure tomorrow, with help from allies, you know, anywhere in this room or those that are watching, will probably, you know, try to come for me going forward, and anyone else who supports this, that should tell you a lot right there. The notion that taxpayers are not renters is ridiculous. Because you are. And anytime I hear that if you're not a taxpayer, in a way, your rights should be different or diminished, or in a way, create a class system if you're a taxpayer or homeowner or, it's pretty dangerous to me. You do not have to agree with me, that is totally fine. You also do not have to reelect me this year or next year, that's totally fine, too. But I know that I know that I know that I know that Osning needed a conversation to open up really our true colors of how we operate, who we are, and who we're going to become, or who we're becoming. Thank you.
Trustees Codman or Basemore, would you like to comment?
So to be quite frank, this, thinking about all the things that were said, I'm often reminded of a meeting that James Baldwin and Lorraine Hansberry had with RFK during the Civil Rights Movement. There was a gentleman by the name of, I believe, Jerome Smith. He had been a, he had worked with SNCC and many other organizations organizing people in the South. And again, there was all these famous people, but he was the only person who actually knew the pulse of what was happening in the American South. And he basically just screamed. He said, "My people are dying." So today, we're here at this public hearing, and we've had many other ones, and we've heard a lot of rhetoric, and people have seemed to made their decisions. But my question, and I guess people's question here is, will the witness actually be respected? People have come year after year, people have stood here with testimony, and the question is, are you actually listening to what's being said? That's deep, because before I get into the actual cost of the $800,000, you know, the first year was $800,000, then two years, then it becomes 1.6. I mean, if we had, do it another year, it'd probably be $2 million, you know what I'm saying? So the numbers keep changing. But the question is, is are you hearing the witness? Because there's a couple of things that jumped out to me. Mr. Rodney Smith wasn't here, he wasn't able to make it today, but he says, "I want to stay here because this is where my family is." And see, that actually speaks to me personally. I'm not, I'm, ooh, third, fourth, fifth, having many generations, we want to think about Osning, my family's been here. My aunt and, my great-aunt and uncle, they own homes. So any notion that I would even consider a policy, and they're in a fixed income, and these are not any, these aren't rich people. My aunt was a CNA. And if it wasn't for having a union or 1199, they probably wouldn't be able to afford what they could afford. This village board right here, or at least the previous board before, honored a man by Bobby Williams, who was a custodian. These are not rich people. So what I'm saying is that when we're elected, we have to make decisions for the whole community. So there's no point, where I'm here, that I'm not thinking about the Alice Scots who own homes, the people who are nurses who own homes. This is not about that. This is about, are you hearing the witness? People have actually been affected for speaking up for themselves. And yet, every time, we have to come back to the same story. Do you hear the witness? Do you hear the voices? I'm not going to address ICE being New York State Community Renewal, that, I won't do that. But this is about dignity. This is about people being able to stay in their homes, whether you're a homeowner or you're not. That's what this is about. This is about whether senior citizens who have, who, again, they're not fancy, they were domestic engineers, that's a nice word for saying, they were maids. Can they stay? We've had people come here over and over again, they've done analysis. The man who actually did the study came here and said, "Listen, this is what I looked at, 2002 to 2017. I even took in the economic recession, doesn't affect it. We got 19 other communities, it doesn't affect it." But then there are people who come here and say, "You know what? This is dividing a community." To me, that's dangerous, because that means that you're not hearing the witness. That means that when someone is hurting, when someone needs something, that if it's not conducive to everybody else, then you won't act. I'm an African-American man. Listen, if I had to wait, and if we had to wait for it to suit the majority, we wouldn't So when it comes to the decision that we make, we've had a lot of information today. And there are definitely some serious concerns that landlords have about profitability and getting rid of a tenant. And those are some major concerns, and I just want to say, listen, ETPA, if you got the tenant with the machete, it will, you can still get rid of the tenant. No, seriously, because this is the unknown chartered area. So I expect people to be concerned. I expect people to show up. I expect people to say, I expect some homeowners to come and say, "Hey, what is this going to do about, like, how's this going to affect us?" Those are real concerns. My aunt and uncle and, and, I already said her name, I ain't going to say her name again, those are real concerns. Those are major concerns. But we, as a community, every year, we have different kind of exemptions that we pass along to everyone else. You know, so even if there was a cost, we do that already. But the question is, why is it this? Look at this room. In fact, I don't really see too many young people, right? So that might be an indicator about who might actually be in these units. There are a lot of homeowners who have to size down, and they size down to this, and they size down to a place with an elevator. You know, so these, this is not to divide the community, but this is about, when there's an issue, will you stand and do something? The last time, I remember the last time, I remember the last time I was, you know, I was emailing, and I remembered my concern was people who were testifying. You know, I made an analogy, that it was a shot clock. That it was a shot clock, that if we weren't acting, we were putting people at risk. This is why I'm glad people came, but if we, as a legislative body, if we can't act, then is it safe to witness? Why keep coming out saying something? This is not Play-Doh, this is real lives. Someone was here today, someone's name was said today. This is, we're on camera. They could be like, oh, who, who, evicted. Then what? This is not a game. And Osning in itself, we're no different than many areas in this country. This is not about who's a good landlord, bad landlord. This is not about who we know, who we don't know, it's about who we don't know. It's about, it's about capitalism. It's about, if you go and you look at the legislation when it was actually created, it talked about an emergency. It talked about instability in New York State. If anyone thinks that the legislators actually took this thing lightly, this is the idea of actually saying, you know what? We're going to pay close attention. This is private property we're talking about. But when we see that it's below 5%, there are certain issues that are happening. So I don't think the state took it lightly, and we don't take it lightly. I don't take it lightly. So again, we'll see what happens, but this is really about the witness. And for me, your witness matters.
Thank you, everyone, for coming out today. A very spirited discussion, but I have to say that I really haven't learned anything new. You know, the information that's been provided was the same information that was provided nearly two years ago. So, you know, everybody's got their own set of data banks and realities and all that other stuff. And, but there's a couple of things I want to bring up. You know, Trustee Basemore, you know, spoke about, you know, some things that we do for people. You know, we do stuff for veterans, we just passed a law to give them a break. We do stuff for our volunteer fire departments, we give them a tax abatement. But I think one of the crazy ones, it's always drove me nuts, and actually, there was a group of people that were lobbying the town around the revale, is that, you know, condominiums and co-ops are not handled the same way as residential housing. And co-ops and condominiums can sell for $400,000 or $500,000, but they're taxed at 2/3 of the value. And when you think of the amount of money that's been lost on that little giveaway, it's a whole lot more than anything you could possibly imagine with ETPA. I have to say that I've never understood that, and I've always thought it was unfair. And again, it was one of those things that was cooked up by the real estate lobby, saying, "Oh, you know, if you give these people a break, they're going to bring all this economy and all this good stuff's going to happen." And of course, you know, the lobbyists are strong, the real estate lobby is very powerful. And they fooled the state legislature into passing that little boondoggle. But I think that the reason that we're here is really an institutional failure on so many different levels. The institutional failure of our federal government, the institutional failure in Albany, continues to be dysfunctional, the institutional failure of the last eight years of Westchester County, where we had, I don't know what that guy was, but it was bad. You know, I got to tell you, that was just sad, that was an empty suit. And now we finally have, you know, a county executive that really understands things. But that's why we're here today, because nobody's doing anything. We're all sitting around talking, we're all sitting around, we're going to do another study. I got to tell you, I'm done with the studies, okay? It's over for me, okay? You know, and listen, you know, one of my colleagues talked about the Kevin Dorkus study. The Kevin Dorkus study was flawed, and I'll tell you why. There was a whole population of people that we tried to draw into the process that didn't participate, and that's the reality. And many of those voices that would have likely been heard, many of them are in this room today. But we have a problem in Osning. Half of our population is completely disconnected from government. We had a discussion, we had a discussion in this room two weeks ago, talking about, like, making sure we have Spanish translation. Because for the first time in the history of Osning, my brother Omar said, "We got to do this." I don't know why it took so long. Hey, listen, I sat in the chair, I've sat in this chair for seven years, it's on me. I screwed up, too. I should have thought of that. But I don't have the same eyes and the same lens that Omar has. So I'm glad for that, I'm glad he brought that up. But we're missing the point here, because we're not talking to everybody, and we're not communicating with everybody, and that is deeply troubling for me. And that's the reason I'm not going to serve any longer after the end of this year, because this board needs to change. We need other faces here than somebody like me. Time is up, and it's time for us to move on, and we need to vote tonight, and we need So I would make a motion to close the public hearing, and I would ask that, as a follow-up to that, that we have the attorney read the motion, and that we call the question. Do I have a second?
Did you say move?
Mayor, did you want to give any final comments?
Oh, there's a motion on the floor. If someone would like to second, we can speak again after that.
Second.
Second.
All right. So the motion on the floor is to close the public hearing. Considering that we got the results of the vacancy study last week in August, when many people are not around, we did have a lot of people who attended our meeting, I'm very pleased about that, and the video has been up for the last week, so I hope that folks have had an opportunity to review the video and the report. But it wasn't until that report came out that we knew for sure that it would even be a possibility to be able to enable ETPA. And we heard from about 32 people tonight. It is highly unusual to vote, to move forward a resolution on the same night as the public hearing, although we have heard many calls for that tonight. In almost every instance when we have a public hearing, we then either keep it open or close the public hearing. On an issue where there is a lot of interest and a lot of community members that would like to speak on it, we almost always leave it open for multiple weeks. So it would be unusual to close this public hearing that has so much interest tonight, first night of the public hearing. But I get the sense of the board that that is likely what is going to be happening in a moment. It is also highly unusual to then consider moving forward with a resolution that we've just had the public hearing for on that same night. In fact, according to Corporation Counsel, from what he can see, we've only done that once, and it was on something that was more operational and procedural, perhaps time-sensitive, not something of this magnitude. I do want to comment a little bit more in light of what I've been able to hear tonight from everyone in the room. Excuse me, ma'am. Excuse me, ma'am. Renters are absolutely taxpayers. That is never a question, and it should never have been thought of as the question we're considering. And I appreciate that Mr. Collins acknowledged that there may be a shifting of taxes. If there is a shifting of taxes, as he suggests, then most tenants in Osning are going to bear that burden. Because most tenants do not live in ETPA buildings. And if the taxes go up for their landlord, that means the taxes go up for those tenants. And the tenants, please, please, we've had the public hearing already. And the tenants who do not live in ETPA-protected buildings, some of them live in luxury buildings, and maybe we're not so concerned about their burden. But most of them live in small multifamily buildings. And they are very likely to be the most economically challenged people in our community. ETPA does not help them, and in fact, it could make Osning more unaffordable for them. When it comes to substandard housing, which we know is a problem in our community, buildings that are under the ETPA program, if there is a landlord who is an absentee landlord not maintaining the building well, providing very poor quality housing for our community, there is no chance that someone is going to purchase that building, do a major renovation, and provide high-quality affordable housing. It is an incredible amount of investment and risk. Excuse me. I am not an expert on this, so I have spoken with experts and listened to experts. That is our job. We listen to the affordable housing experts. If there is the building on Ann Street where we cut the ribbon last year, if that had been under ETPA three years ago, it would still be substandard housing. And the next building in that condition will remain substandard housing if there is ETPA. So there have been many, many compelling speakers tonight, both on this board and at the podium. There have been some statements that have been perhaps overstated or misstated for sure on all sides. From a governance perspective, I think it is unwise to close the public hearing tonight. And I think it is very unwise to move forward with a vote tonight. That said, I can see that I may be in the minority with that opinion tonight.
I, I.
So if others would like to comment, the motion is on the floor. Others are welcome to comment. Please, go right ahead. I'm done.
Well, I, I would, I would just, I would just say that, that I do not share your opinion with regards to the rent things that you're talking about. We've, we've heard, we've heard plenty of people that, that are here in Westchester County that are part of DHCR. There's a, a, a group in White Plains that does this stuff. We had a very clear picture of what was going on last week with Chuck Lesnick. And the other thing I'll say is that, you know, this debate's been going on for nearly two years. This is not anything new. Nothing, as I said it before, my comment, okay? Nothing new has come forward here. I've heard a lot of information. I've, I've, I've processed it for two years, okay? We need, we, this community needs to heal. We need to get beyond this, okay? And we need to protect the people that have put themselves in danger of being evicted by coming to this meeting tonight. And I will not, I, I will not spend another hour, okay, on a study or debating or looking at something. We have vetted this up and down in six ways to Sunday, and, and we're going to vote on this. We're going to vote to close the hearing, and then I'm going to ask that the resolution be read. And I will ask that, that my fellow colleagues, you know, get it, get it for a vote. And, and, and that's what, that's what I'm here to do tonight. I am not waiting any longer. And, and I am, I am sorry that my two colleagues, Rika and, and Mayor Garrity feel the way that they do. But, but anybody, if anybody expected me not to vote for ETPA, given I'm on the Working Families Party and given my feeling about these things, what are you thinking? What could you be thinking? So I, I, I think we, we have a nice agenda here that we'd like to get through, and I think we should get this passed and get this done so we can get on with the rest of our, our business tonight.
If I ever thought, if I ever thought that you were turning a deaf ear to the majority of this community, I got to tell you, basically just said that you came today, mind all made up, you knew everything, you've been saying that for quite a while. You were part of a board for a number of years where things could have done. We've done actually quite a bit of stuff in the past year and a half, including the meeting we just sat through with the Landlord-Tenant Committee. That is part of one of the recommendations. We are one of the few communities to have an active landlord-tenant committee. So it's really disappointing to me to hear, after approving all of that stuff, after being highly involved with Kevin Dorka, who Quantel Bazemore brought to my attention saying, look, this is the guy. This, this is the consulting guy that is the guru about all this stuff. So when you don't hear what you want to hear, what difference does it make what party you belong to? You're supposed to come to these things and actually listen, not only to the public that shows up here, but the public that writes to you. So even more disappointing is that you aren't actually even listening. So you could be all like, you know, up in the airs about it, but honestly, sort of a cop-out, given the fact that you've been highly involved in this entire process. I clearly understand how this vote's going to come, but it's a public hearing, and all of this stuff goes for the record. So if everybody's finished speaking, I guess Mr. Khan?
No, I would.
Oh, you want to?
Yeah, yeah. A couple of things is, I just want to be clear, since, since my name was mentioned. Kevin Dorka came to Osning because in order, again, this goes back to witness. People in the community had said that there was an issue. They had came with a group of solutions. But then, when people, again, like to go to the quote-unquote "experts," and there was a, there was a chance to do that, then we bring in the expert, right? And Kevin Dorka's study is very true. Who's in the room determines the outcome of the study. But I just, I have to make this point of clarification. 2024-26 Ann Street, had ETPA been implemented years ago, would not have been a substandard building.
At the Anthean.
That's, that's just not true. So, listen, I know it's election time. I'm not up. And so people can choose whether to be fair weather politicians. That's the, that's your choice. But please, please, please understand that if you have a policy that guarantees improvements, then it can't be substandard housing. Because tenants are empowered. And, and if you don't want DHCR in your business, if you're ETPA-eligible property, then maintain your property. It's simple. Then, then no one has to call Queens or White Plains to say, this is the issue. So I just want to be clear. You know, we can, we can do study after study, and people could come here, and, and there definitely have been comments that have been made by some of my colleagues, that if I didn't know any better, it was actually written by certain lobby groups. I can actually tell who actually gave them the information. It sounds very familiar, right? But that's okay. But still in all, the hard part for me is, is that we talk about going to experts, but I guess that means that no matter how many times people come here and say that there's a concern, they'll never be heard. That, that's, that's what, that's what, after this whole thing, I'll actually be wrestling with. No further comments.
Call for the question. Oh, motion on the floor.
It is on.
Right, so the motion.
Motion first.
Please.
I'm sorry.
Please, Corporation Counsel, do you, what, do you want to comment?
Motion first is to close the public hearing. I believe there's been a motion, it's been seconded, so that has to be voted on first.
Madam Clerk, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
I do have a resolution. I believe it's been asked to be read, and then I've sent it to everyone, to folks. Hello, everyone. Got me now? Good. All right. All right. I don't have to do that. I have sent this to all the board members. Do, does anyone need a hard copy as, as I read through?
I have.
You do? Okay. I'll read this resolution, and then there can be a motion on that resolution, as, as would be our normal practice. Resolution declaring that the vacancy rate for rental housing units in the Village of Osning and buildings with six or more rental units completed prior to January 1, 1974, is less than 5% and that a housing emergency exists as set out in New York Unconsolidated Law Section 8621, Emergency Tenant Protection Act. Whereas in 1974, the New York State Legislature found and declared that a serious public emergency continues to exist in the housing of a considerable number of persons in the state of New York, and that such emergency necessitated the intervention of federal, state, and local government in order to prevent speculative, unwarranted, and abnormal increases in rents. And that the transition from regulation to a normal market of free bargaining between landlord and tenant, while the ultimate objective of state policy, must take place with due regard for such emergency. And that the policy herein expressed shall be subject to determination of the existence of a public emergency requiring the regulation of residential rents within any city, town, or village by the local legislative body of such town or village, New York Unconsolidated Law Section 8622. And whereas pursuant to the Emergency Tenant Protection Act, the declaration of such an emergency shall be made by the local legislative body of such city, town, or village, on the basis of the supply of housing accommodations within such city, town, or village, the condition of such accommodations, and the need for regulating and controlling residential rents within such city, town, or village. A declaration of emergency may be made as to any class of housing accommodations if the vacancy rate for the housing accommodations in such class within such municipality is not in excess of 5%. And a declaration of emergency may be made as to all housing accommodations if the vacancy rate for the housing accommodations within such municipality is not in excess of 5%. New York Unconsolidated Law Section 8623A. And whereas no resolution declaring the existence or end of an emergency may be adopted except after public hearing held on not less than 10 days' public notice, as the local legislative body may reasonably provide, New York Unconsolidated Law Section 8623C. And whereas the Village of Osning entered into a consultant agreement in May 2018 with the Collective for Community, Culture, and Environment, CCCE, whereby CCCE would conduct a housing vacancy rate analysis for buildings completed prior to January 1, 1974, which buildings contained at least six residential units. And whereas on August 20, 2018, CCCE provided to the village manager the results of the housing vacancy rate analysis conducted in June and July 2018, and that the analysis found a vacancy rate of 3.06% for those properties completed prior to January 1, 1974, containing at least six residential units. And whereas the CCCE Housing Vacancy Rate Analysis was put on the village's website to make the analysis accessible in advance of any public discussion about the analysis. And whereas the Village Board of Trustees held a work session on August 29, 2018 at the community center, at which time the results of the housing vacancy rate analysis were presented by representatives from CCCE. And whereas, in addition to representatives from CCCE, Chuck Lesnick from New York State Division of Homes and Community Renewal attended the work session and responded to questions from board members. And whereas pursuant to New York Unconsolidated Law Section 8623C, notice of the public hearing as to whether the protections of the ETPA should be applied to qualifying multifamily rental properties in the Village of Osning was published in the Gazette on August 23, 2018. And whereas the public hearing was held on September 5, 2018, to obtain comments from the public as to whether the protections of the ETPA should be applied to applicable buildings in the village. And whereas the public hearing was closed on September 5, 2018. Now, therefore be it resolved, that on the basis of the housing vacancy rate analysis conducted by the Collective for Community, Culture, and Environment, which concluded that the vacancy rate for multifamily buildings containing six or more units, which buildings were completed prior to January 1, 1974, was 3.06%, which is less than the 5% vacancy rate established in New York Unconsolidated Laws Section 8623A. The Board of Trustees of the Village of Osning declares that an emergency exists as set forth in the Emergency Tenant Protection Act. And be it further resolved, that effective upon the adoption of this resolution and filing of same, the provisions of the ETPA as amended shall apply to buildings in the Village of Osning containing six or more rental units completed prior to January 1, 1974. And be it further resolved, that the provisions of this resolution shall continue in full force and effect until the Board of Trustees of the Village of Osning declares by resolution that the aforementioned emergency is at an end in accord with New York Unconsolidated Law Section 8623B, which provides, "The local governing body of a city, town, or village, having declared an emergency pursuant to subdivision A of this section, may at any time, on the basis of the supply of housing accommodations within such city, town, or village, the conditions of such accommodations, and the need for continuing regulation and control of residential rents within such municipality, declare that the emergency is either wholly or partially abated, or that the regulation of rents pursuant to this act does not serve to abate such emergency and thereby remove one or more classes of accommodations from regulation under this act. The emergency must be declared at an end, once the vacancy rate described in subdivision A of this section exceeds 5%. And be it further resolved, that certified copies of this resolution shall be provided to the State Division for Homes and Community Renewal and the Westchester County Rent Guidelines Board, indicating that the effective date of this resolution is September 5, 2018. And be it further resolved, that upon review by the Corporation Counsel, the village manager is authorized to complete such documents as are necessary to implement this resolution."
So moved.
Further comments from the board? Before we vote on this, I just want to ask Corporation Counsel regarding a couple of items that were raised last week and had not yet been explored by the Village Board related to ETPA, which could be an extension of the program for SCRI and DRI. They were referenced by a couple of the speakers tonight, which would be programs specifically to benefit seniors and folks with disabilities. That is not included in tonight's resolution. Corporation Counsel, could you speak to that?
I could, Mayor. Thank you. For two reasons. One, the public hearing notice did not make reference to either SCRIE or DRI. Those two would also require local law amendments to our tax code for the village, so it would be, it would be something that would be separate and distinct. It's not part of this particular resolution declaring a housing emergency. And also, it is something that we would need to see the economic impact before we would, you know, present that to the board as a potential addition to our tax law in terms of those two rent exemptions. So it's not part, it's not part of the declaration that would be made tonight. There is no senior citizen rent, rent increase exemption, or disabled person rent increase exemption. exemption as part of this declaration.
Also, one of the questions that we had last week for Chuck Lesnick from HCR was regarding the implementation and the timing. If we do indeed vote this evening to pass this resolution, what would that mean as far as when it would actually take effect, and what are the steps that need to take place, and how is that process determined?
Well, the effective date is the date the resolution is passed. What would then happen next is the resolution, as it's provided here, would be sent to both the State Division of Homes and Community Renewal. It would also be sent to the Westchester County Rent Guidelines Board. Based upon Mr. Lesnick's statements from last week, the State Division of Homes and Community Renewal would itself need a certain amount of time to get up to speed, because based upon the CCCE report, we're looking at potentially about 1,841 units that could be subject to ETPA. Trustee Bazemore, I see you looking at me quizzically. 1,500 was the number they used, because that was the number they got responses for. But the total number would be potentially 1,800. So Mr. Lesnick did indicate that his division would need a certain amount of time to get that done. There would be leases that would be required for those locations that do not have leases. There would certainly be documentation that would be required by the state to have the names, for example, of all the owners, because there would have to be communication with those owners. One of the things that was suggested by Mr. Lesnick last week was the possibility of having a dedicated, you know, home and community renewal person at the village to basically assist with that initial paperwork. When DHCR would actually be ready to proceed, that's more a question they would have to answer, but the effective date would be the date of the resolution.
Thank you. Any further comments? Madam Clerk?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Given the hour, given the hour and the emotion in the room, I think it is warranted for us to take a five-minute break. Everybody get a five-minute break. I have been informed by our videographer that we have one hour and 17 minutes before we run out of videotape.
You couldn't have just said 17 minutes?
We still have several pages of an agenda to complete, although there's now an echo in the room, because everyone but one of us has left the room. So, thank you Corporation Council and Village Manager for going through the agenda and identifying which of these resolutions has a time sensitivity to it, and you have also identified a number of them: Item F, item G, item H, and the first bullet of new business that can be pushed for two weeks. We will add them to the September 17th agenda. So is there any objection on the board to postponing the items that I just referenced?
No.
Nope.
Okay. Thank you very much. And there was also a suggestion that in some cases, we may just ask the clerk to read the header of the item on the agenda. Is there any objection from the board?
No.
No.
All right. Well, then, looks like we'll get through the videotape. Madam-- oh, where are we? Yeah, Madam Clerk? We are at Mayor's and Trustees Announcements. Okay, does anybody have any comments and announcements to make?
No.
I just have one. So, as we all know, annual tradition is this Saturday, the Osning Matters Race. It's Saturday, September 8. I believe they meet up at 8:30 and kickoff at 9 o'clock. I do think that tomorrow night is the last night to register online, and then you can go on Osning Matters at org. Hopefully you'll join me, and I know other people hopefully on this board will be running or walking. It's a great annual event, and it benefits our educational foundation that actually supplements what the school district can't do. So it's a pretty good program. That's all. Thank you.
Are there announcements? Yes, please. Go ahead, record.
Nope.
Oh, I thought you raised your hand.
It's annoying, I'm sorry.
Oh, yes, I look forward to participating in the-- I will be doing the two-mile walk. I did run one year. It took me four months of training to barely run half of the race. I'm not a runner. But it is definitely one of my favorite fundraisers in Osning every year, with hundreds of folks participating. It's really a terrific day. I look forward to seeing many of you out there. After your run, go to the farmer's market. It's always a good idea to go to the farmer's market anyway. But this week in particular, Green Osning will be there, and they will be at 11 o'clock. Folks are welcome to gather to participate in a climate ride, which you may be aware that the climate ride is a global initiative encouraging awareness of climate change and the impacts of climate change, and we are participating in that right here in Osning. There will be groups, cyclists at all ability levels are welcome to join in in a variety of guided rides through Osning. And also, there will be information about the Lime Bike pop-up. I'm looking at you, Stuart, because I know there was a lot of back and forth on the MOU and the contract with Lime Bikes, but we are on track to have the Lime Bike pop-up, which is the folks in the community can experience for one week, this shared bike initiative. And I'm forgetting, there's a better terminology for it, for Lime Bikes?
Yeah.
Bike sharing?
Dockless bikes.
Dockless bike sharing. And to get information about that, because it's something new for most of us, there will be information at the farmer's market this week, and then the pop-up will begin the following week, the 15th, at the farmer's market. And the pop-up will last from September 15th to the following Saturday, the 22nd, I believe, is where we stand now.
I think that's right. And there will be two Lime Bikes at the farmer's market Saturday.
Great.
So that folks could see it and see how it, you know, basically how it operates. And then on the 15th, the plan is that there will be folks here from Lime Bike who will explain how to use their app, so that you could sign up, and you can use it, and pick the bicycles up, drop the bicycle off, and then someone else will take the bicycle somewhere else.
Excellent. Good.
Even though it's a late hour, so in White Plains, it seems to be working really well. I didn't realize they actually had people who then drive around. And if you have too many bikes in one area, they actually have a van, and they move different areas so that they're in and they make sure they're not-- I mean, I did not realize actually that was part of the deal, but I guess you've been more involved. It seems to be working really well, although White Plains is not as hilly as we are, so I'm expecting lots of them downhill. But, you know, when New York Shell's looking at different companies, I think it's sort of cool to see how this plays out, so thanks for working on it.
No problem.
Yes, and doing a one-week pop-up is a good way for us to figure out how it may work, what will work better, what will not work, and for all of us who might be curious about it to be able to check it out. And then also, please mark your calendars. For September 20th, the Osning Documentary and Discussion Series screening is called Capturing the Flag, and it is about voter suppression. And it should be a very interesting film and panel. I hope you'll join us. As always, it is free to the public at the Osning Public Library. The program begins at 6:30, and that's Thursday, September 20th. The name of the film is Capturing the Flag. You can get much more information at osningdocumentaries.org. Okay. Madam Clerk? Okay. An administrative report from Village Manager Deborah McDonald, next.
The only thing that I want to share tonight is an update on Miguel Mara, who was injured while he was clearing the run. So any of you that are out there going to run this year in the race on Saturday, please, you know, say a prayer, hoping for a speedy recovery. We had an employee that was seriously injured during the clearing of trees and brush in the Krawbucki area. He has been moved to a rehab center in Croton, so I'll be getting that information to the board. We'll be sending him flowers now that he's out of intensive care, and he's had a couple of surgeries, but it's going to be a long road to recovery for him. So please, say a prayer for him for a speedy recovery. And that's all I have for tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, an administrative report from Corporation Counsel Stuart--
I have a question, I'm sorry.
Sorry.
I'm trying to phrase it correctly. Any idea when Bell Avenue and Camp Woods might come to a conclusion, since all the school buses are now rattling over all of that construction?
We have not had an update recently from ConEd. We are in constant contact with them now, and so we actually know the people that we need to talk to to get an update, but I don't have one for you tonight.
They're definitely working.
They are working.
They're working, but if we could update the website with that--
Sure.
Literally, the buses are just-- it's just really bad.
Right. Well, we did have a really productive meeting, and when Manager McDonald was saying, "We know who the people are," the people were in the room with our people, and a lot of the discussion was what's going on with that big project, and there's a lot of open projects. It was a really valuable meeting, I felt, and I know that their intention is to be wrapping it up this fall and then immediately following with paving, which would be a combination of paving done as restoration by ConEd, coordinating with the village in the areas that-- not ConEd restoration, so that that whole area, Camp Woods, Bell, Hugsley, can be taken care of, ideally this fall. So as we have updates, if that changes, then we'll let everyone know.
I get it, I just dates on the website with police people. I know they're working. I mean, everybody's saying that.
Yeah, they're not going to give us dates. They're not going to give us dates. Okay. So Corporation Counsel Stuart Cahan, straight report.
Thank you, Victoria Mayor, members of the board. Still good evening. And we will, on September 17th, I'll have a resolution with regard to proposed Local Law 5. I want to thank the board with regard to that, so that it will be adopted. I think we had our public hearing tonight, and I will, I'm sure, be meeting with the village manager and the building inspector, because there are a number of things that will have to be done to implement that in terms of getting in touch with our property owners who have vacant properties and our property owners who have signs that need to be dealt with, so that they can all be made aware of what we have there. But I do want to thank the board, because I think that's a very important piece of legislation and furthers our code enforcement efforts with regard to the village. Now turning more to commercial and vacant properties, which was something that we did not really have in the earlier portions of Section 162. I know that on, I think on Wednesday, we will have a representative or representatives from the Landlord-Tenant Relations Council here. They've been very busy, I know I said that before, and I think Mr. Dewey mentioned it tonight. I think it's, they're up to maybe 17 matters that they have had in some way, shape, manner, or form over this period of time. I got three calls this week on tenants who are not getting back their security deposits, and that has, that's another issue that they've been dealing with. So it's, the way it works, as I've said it before, you can fill out the form that's online, send it to ltrc@villageofosning.org, and I send it immediately to the Chair and the Vice Chair of the Board, and my deputy Corporation Counsel, who is the attorney who is at those meetings, and they get to it as quickly as they can. I know that there was a meeting tonight, but it's really, you know, it's very active. We do have openings still on a number of boards. We have openings on EAC, and I just invite, you know, if there are members of the public who are interested, fill out the form that's on the website. And because we do have openings, and certainly on a board like EAC, we want to get as close to, if not full, membership, because there are a number of matters that will be coming up that will require their opinions. So that's my report for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Next, an administrative report from Police Chief Kevin Sylvester.
Just briefly, getting ready in a few short hours, the schools will open, so our crossing guards will be deploying. We're going to have extra patrols out tomorrow for traffic safety, so we're encouraging everybody to drive carefully, maybe leave a few minutes early. We're going to be working at each of the schools on parent drop-off and bus drop-off to ensure that we'll have safe passage for all of our students. And everything else that we've got going on has been tweeted, Facebook, nixelled, Instagram'd, and nextored, so we'll be making a lot of announcements over the next couple of days about stuff going on in and around schools, and that's all we've got going on for now. Thanks.
Thank you. Madam Clerk? Okay, next, organization announcement. Is there anyone who would like to make an organizational announcement? Okay, moving on, and now we move on to the resolutions. Moving on to the resolutions now. Okay, so--
Title, you can just read it. Just, we'll read titles. We'll show you.
Okay. So first, we have approval of minutes, August 15th, 2018, regular meeting. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Comments on the board? Clerk? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, approval of minutes, August 22nd, special meeting. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
What am I forgetting? What was the-- oh, oh, it was calling this hearing. Okay. Okay, very good. Comments on the board? Madam Clerk? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, approval of voucher detail, September 5th, 2018. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Comments on the board? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, resolution supporting September as attendance awareness month. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
I do want, I do want to just comment. It is a lengthy but valuable resolution that Superintendent Sanchez asked us to pass tonight, so I will certainly be sure that I put it out on social media and remind folks that this is something that we do very much support, and it's something that the school district has been focused on for the last few years, recognizing that attendance is a very strong indicator for school performance, and working very hard to make sure that Osning students are attending school anytime that it is, that they are able to be there, unless there's some health concern that prohibits them. And so we are very much supportive of this initiative, and I thank the school district for sharing with us all of this valuable information that we will have online to share with our residents. I doubt anybody is up watching us right now, anyway.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Resolution authorizing the village manager to sign documents to continue the village's participation in the community choice aggregation program. Fair motion?
So moved.
Second.
Comments on the board? I'll just briefly say that the community choice aggregation program is, it was pretty revolutionary that Sustainable Westchester was able to change New York State law to allow for this to happen. There's community choice aggregation that had previously existed in six areas of the country. Sometimes that was a county here or an area there, all across, you know, spread out across the United States. And it was one initiative that was, it took years to get New York State to consider it, and it was, it began as a pilot program, very, very restricted, just to Westchester County, and they put a lot of consumer protections into it, and there were different levels. You could do the 100% renewable level, which means that everybody in your community who is already getting their power through ConEd, they would by default, instead of ConEd going to the market and purchasing any particular kind of energy, whether it was, you know, nuclear, coal, whatever it may be, or solar, that now all of that energy, they go to the energy market and they buy exclusively renewable energy, and that is what Osning joined in a dozen other communities to opt into, and now I believe there's 21 communities that are doing the 100% renewable energy. And almost immediately after Westchester put forward and enabled this community choice aggregation, it was opened up to the rest of the state. The state spent a lot of time vetting it and deciding whether or not they wanted to allow for it to happen, but once they did, Westchester was at the forefront, but then it was opened up to the rest of New York State, and other areas are figuring out how they can make it happen too. So I'm very pleased to have been part of the making that happen.
Madam Clerk? All those in favor?
Aye.
Skipping item F. Item F, skipping item G, and skipping item H. Yes, okay. So then we move to item I, which is finance budget modification, Gordon Avenue and River Parkway Water Main Replacement Capital Project. Fair motion?
So moved.
Second.
Comments on the board? Madam Manager, would you please comment on this?
This is a resolution to do a budget modification for the replacement of water mains on Gordon Avenue and River Parkway, but it is also a modification to the budget for the new water plant. And the reason that we are modifying that budget is to recognize that we want to apply for two grants that could potentially provide us with 40% of the funding for several elements of this, and that is through the New York State Infrastructure Improvement Act and the New York State Intermunicipal Water Infrastructure Grant Program. Part of this resolution recognizes those two grant sources as potential funding, but also provides the assurances to the state that we intend to do this project, and that's why we're doing this modification right now. Originally, they had asked us to pass a resolution for bonding-- Originally, they had asked us to pass a resolution for bonding. I did not believe that that was the right time, and neither did our Finance Director, Tom Warren. So we specifically are putting in this resolution that once we've bid this project and we know exactly how much we're going to be spending, we intend, this board intends, to authorize the bonding and to move forward with this project. But this resolution was necessary for those grant applications.
But you believe, you don't believe that by not moving forward with the bonding at this point, which seems like there's a good logic to not doing that, but you don't believe that's going to undermine our opportunity to access the grant money?
We don't because of the way that this is worded, and it recognizes the grant opportunity, and it also states exactly what I just said, which is this board intends to move forward after we've bid this project, and we know what our final costs are going to be.
Okay. Comments?
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 J.
Finance Budget Modification, Route 9A Water Main Replacement Capital Project. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Comments on the board? Madam Clerk, did you want to comment on this, or is this, this is the other, you were commenting on both of these?
So this budget modification is actually for township roads that we are responsible for maintaining and upgrading, and it's a budget modification for those roads in the township.
But not the roadways. We're just talking about the water mains that are in the town.
Correct. The water mains that are in the town.
Okay. Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Hey. Finance Budget Modification, New Indian Brook Water Treatment Plant Capital Project. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Comments on the board? Madam Clerk? Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Now, we have moved to Continuing Business of the Board.
Is there any continuing business?
Okay. So new business of the board. I believe we're skipping the first item.
Correct.
Okay. So moving on to the second item, Approval of Oning Permit for 21 Camp Woods Road, The Tasty Table.
The Tasty Table is the restaurant that is planned to take over where Wobble has been a staple in our community for over a decade, and so we wish them the very best, and we're moving this forward tonight just to be sure that we are not going to slow down their process by a couple of weeks if we can be at all helpful in that. Thank you, Corporation Counsel, for sending us their application. It's kind of a funny thing that the Board of Trustees votes on onings, but because they often extend into the right-of-way, that's part of the process. Does anybody else have any comments or questions on this?
I have a swatch if anyone wants to see that.
It looked bright orange.
It does.
Yeah. Okay.
I'm just excited that they're opening up over there. I stopped by, actually. They ripped -- oh, yeah, they ripped out the floors and stuff, so I'm excited that another store is opening up or a place to eat is my favorite hobby. I actually saw this, I think I spoke to Omar earlier, maybe I didn't, but I had actually said that the village manager was going to start making these decisions, not keep coming back to the board for onings and things like that. Did I miss this entire -- I missed --
We just, we need to change the code on that because technically, under Chapter 225, which deals with streets and onings, it's just a change we will have to make as of right now for onings that are over the public right-of-way. It's the Board of Trustees.
Oh, so it's because it's, okay.
It's within the code. But Village Manager and I have talked about that as one of the.
I thought. No, yeah.
We've done it for a lot of items. I don't remember onings particularly being on the list the last time. I think every time it comes up, we say, "Gosh, it's such a funny thing that we vote on this."
No, we had a whole discussion because literally I remember swatches being passed around the table, and we all looked at each other again.
By Dunkin' Donuts, the booths. Yeah, and we said, "Why are we doing this?"
Anyway, I think we're sort of, might be in agreement that maybe we should, like, do something about this.
Right. But that said, Corporation Cahan, it doesn't have to go on the top of your list of items because we do have a lot of items in the legal department that might be slightly more urgent. For now, any further comments on this? Madam Clerk?
Okay. Is there a motion? Sorry. Oh, we didn't vote yet.
So moved. Second.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Next, Resolution Authorizing the Village Manager to Sign an Agreement with the Town of Osning to Extend Until June 30, 2019. The intermunicipal agreement dated January 1, 2002, between the Village of Osning and the Town of Osning, for the Village of Osning to supply the unincorporated area of the Town of Osning with water. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
And again, renewing this for this short period of time is part of our ability to